9:57
Okay. This is the best. Here. Exactly. Okay. Change. You know, we're gonna change.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Right.
Experimenting with babies. 50 amazing science projects you could perform on your kid. Don't experiment with kids. You're not their father. You can't experiment with kids.
That's just.
I think one lines me chapter three.
I don't wanna answer.
Good afternoon, staff video.
So it hasn't started. Okay.
Meeting speech.
You might find in a week.
I think like three days.
None of my meeting script. My meeting script. Okay, we'll go back to this meeting.
Haven't they do that?
I know.
You want to.
Yes, everyone, please go ahead to the pleasure of meetings.
Pleasure meetings. Of the United States of America and through the Republic for which we stand, one nation, united, peaceful, liberty, justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for waiting while we finish up our executive session. As a preliminary matter, this is select for Chair Jeff Swanberg. Good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted both in person and via Zoom. Some speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely, and we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that if you are participating remotely, other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on board docs, and we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs, unless I note otherwise. Before we begin, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, if you are participating via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. For all participants in person or remote, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. And for items with public comment after the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to clearly state their name and address prior to making their comments. Public comments will be limited three minutes each. Thank you very much. And the first item on our agenda is public comment. And so we will. The board would like to hear public comment. If there's further action that is required by the board, the chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may, if we are able to within the confines of open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. And so I will now open floor to public comment, and we will start with people in the room. Is there anybody in the room who'd like to make a public comment? Good evening.
Jim. So I wanted to come here to talk about the events that happened during the parade on Sunday. So often people come here and they stand at this podium with an issue or a complaint. If I were standing here before EverSource, that would probably be the case this evening. However, I stand before a group of abandoned residents, and this isn't a complaint I have, but a show of utter respect and appreciation for how Sunday's events unfolded. What everyone downtown saw was a parade, a festive event, smiling faces, decorated clothes put on by a fabulous committee of volunteers that I'm lucky enough to not only work with, but to also call my friends, Lindy Gier, Jen Dogen, Coria Labouny, and Julie Quaterney. Everybody knew that we worked hard, but what they didn't see on Sunday was what we gassed like downtown an hour prior to the parade cause. With an area of downtown shut down, it looked as though we had two options in front of us, cancel or re-group the parade. I honestly almost cried hearing the words come out of Chief Noel's mouth when it told me on the first call. We planned so long for this event for all of you, and Chief Noel knows that, and assured me that he was doing everything he could to remove that as an option. I even went as far as to offer Greg to come down with him to speak with EverSource, but he decided it was better for him to take this one. I got a call about a half hour to go that they were reworking on a different parade route. It's a lot of time consuming. It's time consuming for them, but they were doing it for all of the town. W A V M was scrambling to figure out they could make the new edition of students emceeing the event with descriptions of each individual group in the parade work on a new parade route. These girls, Lily Waxback and Sophia O'Brien, were incredible. The photographers, photographers from the high school I had arranged from the high school, Evelyn Hickey and Bella Wellington, who took great photos, I'll share on the site this week as I catch up, were also looking forward to being part of that route. They would have all lost out on that opportunity if it hadn't have been for Chief Noel. I had called Santa in the sky and told him the new route. We've reworked everything. I was so worried for food collection, which is something I'm very proud of, would not be as successful with the new plan. I was so worried for food collection, which is something I'm very proud of, would not be as successful with the new plan. I climbed myself under the back of Mr. Mark's truck with a few minutes ago with a bullhorn to make the announcement that it wasn't going to work out and we would have to reboot our normal tradition. As I hand, but the bullhorn wouldn't work all the way enough. As I had to get down to someone to help me, my phone rang, maybe divine intervention, but Chief Noble said on the other line, everything was safe and we could go back to moon. I'm pretty sure I've never told Chief Noble how much I loved it before. I think I must have said it about 10 times to him. I climbed up that track truck so happy. He was absolutely my hero and he saved the day. This is something that needs to be commended. They did such a good job and most of you listening either live or via recording are going to say, I cannot believe that that happened because it seemed like so many people had no idea. And that's the reason why they need to be commended. It worked so well and so often people come here and say when things don't work, right? But I thought it was something that really needed to be said how well everybody worked to make that happen. So I wanted to let you know the chief noble saved our town's tradition, our family memories, things like this in a small town are so incredibly important. Any event that brings this town together is absolutely worth that, worth that extra work and he absolutely did this. And I just wanted to say thank you in public so that people know that when positive things happen and things go well, that it's an absolute show that sometimes things can really go well. I know so often people complain, but I thought that it was something that needed to be said. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct that. It was, it was the offices on the cloud. It was offices working with revoting with working with putting this, this is not me alone at all. What men do offices, how they took it in stride. They were relating and an officer down there who lay information to me where the other offices were about. Where this was not, this was.
Thank you. And I, I think that highlights in what the chief just said, there's always a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes and that's true every day that we don't see. And that's just a, you got to see a piece of that. And so a lot of people worked very quickly to try to figure out what to do in that situation. Now we got a backup parade route if we ever need one in the future. Thank you, chief. Um, and as we know, there's a lot of work behind the scenes to plan that parade as well. And so thank you, Jen, because clearly people enjoyed that, had a fantastic time. Uh, the food donation, obviously critical support there. So thank you for all your, your efforts and everybody loves seeing Santa in the helicopter. So. Anybody else?
Will.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Uh, any other public comments in the room? All right. Any public comments online this evening? All right. Uh, we will move on to our first item, which is the consent agenda. Uh, we have uh, three items, the first of which is the renewal of our um, several types of licenses. So these are annual renewal processes for all of these licenses, all things we passed before.
Alright.
Yep. And then B is a liquor license transfer for online wine and liquor and then C is a cemetery deed. Uh, any comments on any of the consent agenda items? I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items A through C as shown pending completion of all necessary requirements authorizing the use of digital signatures for approval.
Do I have a second? All in favor? All right, consent agenda items pass. All right, next we have item five. So item five is reappearance. Uh, at the start, we have a conversation, uh, which um, was at the request, I don't know if it was a request of you, Chris, or at the human relations committee to review the charge of the committee and perhaps discuss a refocusing of the group. Um, Chris, do you want to fill us in with a little detail behind what we're looking at for this conversation?
I, I think the part of the issue is that there's only um, two members, right? Yourself and Elliot as of right now? It's, it's, I mean, my, my concern was just that there's, we lost two members in the last month. One, one, one move and the other resigned for, you know, other reasons. Um, and is with only two people on the committee, one being Chief Noble, the other is Elliot Frisby, who was stepped in and, you know, done a good job. And is the chair, which is.
Uh, may I interrupt for one moment, please? So sorry.
Just a second, Elliot, do you want to?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
Um, Elliot, could you introduce yourself before?
Oh, hey folks, I'm sorry about that. Uh, my name is Elliot. I'm the chair pro temp of the HRC, the human relations committee. And um, there, I just, there are three people. I just wanted to remember that Kim is in there too now. That's all. I can't, uh, uh, Kim Connors.
I'm sorry, I haven't.
That's okay. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to remind, that's all.
I've only, I've only missed one meeting and, and since it's been established that I know of one or two meetings and I've never seen her at a meeting or heard her contribute. So I didn't, I didn't know she was on the committee. My, my apologies to you and Kim.
No worries, no worries at all.
The point remains that it, it, that my concern is, and I think Elliot, I think it's an issue that maybe we need to, you know, come into this into, into this meeting with yourself and the other committee members and have a conversation about where we think it's going, what we think we're going to do with this committee, because it seems to have you know, lost its way. And I think anybody that's on the committee would agree with that. And that's kind of why Caroline left. I, I just want to see if we can get this back on track as to what the original purpose was.
Elliot, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, I, I agree with what Chris said. Um, and every, and everything that he said, I think is accurate. It's we, we, we lost one member who resigned recently Caroline and then um, and then we have Shinika, who I believe has moved out of town and we are working on replacing those positions, but it's been difficult. And um, we have been having some conversations in the committee recently about, about, yeah, about trying to get it back on track as Chris said and um, uh, refocused on its original mission.
So. Go ahead, Chris.
No, I, I agree. I just, I just, I just think you kind of need to have a larger discussion before we add new members and move forward as to, you know, what, where are we going? What, what, what are some of the things we, we should be doing in, um, you know, which direction the members, the three members of the committee want to go? Um, I just think that's a conversation we need to have because you know, the status of it now just doesn't seem to be, you know, moving in the direction that um, it was originally intended for and what their original scope was going to be. I, you know, I see that we have a person who is seeking to be a member who isn't even a, you know, he's not, this person has never been to a meeting, never taken part of the meeting, never seen a meeting and is not even a, a resident of Maynard. So I don't, you know, I'm, I'm a little confused as to that, but I think before we appoint anybody new, we need to have a conversation with the committee in, in the select board as to what, you know, what, what we should be doing and how we should be doing it and what, what's the direction, kind of refocus things. And that includes Elliot, by the way, getting you some help. Because I know that, you know, um, chairman pro temp is not something that you love being and, and I, you know, and, you know, it shouldn't go without saying that, you know, it's very much appreciated that you've taken that role on and it's done great with it. But I just think we need to kind of, you know, have a conversation with all of us in the same room at the same time and just kind of, you know, you know, get, get the bus going in the same, the right direction again. And then, then talking about adding, you know, more people.
Um, okay, that sounds good. Um, Chris, I'm not being facetious or snarky at all here. We, um, I'm just trying, I'm having a hard time remembering. Um, were you at the past meeting or two where we were talking about the town social worker?
This one.
Uh, I think that we just, I, I think that we discussed that during the past two meetings. And so I just, I just want to ask, because that's been sort of a direction the committee has gone over in the past couple of meetings. And um, when you're talking about the direction of it, I, I, I'm, are you referring to that, that overall project? Uh, like, do you think that that's not a direction that the committee should be going and trying to assist with town social worker? Uh, or is it more generalized than that?
More general, because we had that, we've had that discussion um, going way back to when we had the, the girl that um, was acting for the police department.
Uh, Emily Black, I think.
Yeah. So we, we went back that far to have that discussion, which is I think about a year ago.
Yeah.
So, so it's something that I agree with wholeheartedly that, you know, is necessary and it absolutely might be something that this group looks at, but I think we just need to get. So I'm not, I'm not being critical of that. I'm just being, I'm, I'm just. It, we've had a discussion at almost every meeting that we've had that we, you know, with, without a full, robust membership and without um, a, you know, a, a full, full time, for lack of a better term, chair. Um, we just, we've had the conversation where we need to get things going back into a direction that we that we wanted to go and or that we thought it would go in, you know, we back to the chart, you know, I think we've been away from it. That's all. I just want to make sure we're going back to the, to where we want to be.
I agree.
It's, it's just a bunch of conversation we all have to have. I think it has to be had with, you know, the people in this room, because it is a, it is a, a arm of the so select board. And I think we just need to have that conversation some night in this room with all of us together at the same time. I'm not, I'm not trying to be critical. I just, it just, it's, I just want to, I just wanted to get succeed and we were having a lot of success. But it's been a while since we've got anything going because we don't have the traction of um, added membership, you know, the members that we need to, to, to get the traction that we need to move forward. I just want to keep moving forward. That's all.
So I know that groups like these exist in other communities. I think they have different charges, different titles. There's probably a variety if we look at them. But has the HRC looked at similar, um, not just the titles and charges of those groups, but drilling down to more tactically what they're doing in their towns to meet those charges? Um, have, have we looked at our, our neighbors in terms of what other similar groups are doing?
We have, but it's been a while. It's been a long time since we've gone back to revisit that.
I think especially because you have a relatively new group in, in terms of some of the committees have been around decades and any group that was formed that I see in my work as well, uh, before the pandemic and then all of a sudden they get hit and that it's very hard to keep kind of a consistent message through all of the um, craziness that we've, we've seen over the last couple of years. So um, re-scoping and recharging and, and also making sure that you kind of connect those to a few tactical goals. And the first place I would look to, uh, and if you haven't a while, I would suggest this is other communities that, that have done this work. Um, and you, you may find some, some new directions that are, are value added and well suited to operating within a municipal framework, which is, is not necessarily true of everything that could be done. So that, that would be my first place to look if I were to recommend a, a direction for the HRC.
I think that's a great suggestion. Um, Chris, in regards to your, uh, your idea for having a conversation. Um, are you talking about a, are you talking about a joint meeting of the select board in the HRC or something? Uh, or, or having a representative? I mean, you are the self support liaison to the HRC. Um, in, in what capacity do you want to have that conversation? I guess that's what I'm asking.
I think that what you just said is, is exactly the conversation, uh, you know, joint meaning to just kind of have that conversation, you know, have that.
Okay.
As to, you know, um, any of the, the three members of the committee that have, um, people thoughts and we can, any of, you know, some of my, you know, some of the Blackwood members might have other thoughts, because when we formulated this group, there were some specific things that we were looking at, some specific tasks and um, you know, we seem to have resolved them a little bit. Now I think it's a matter of what other areas. Um, are there other areas where the select board is willing to say to the HSC, go, go there, do this, look at that. Because there are certain things that we looked at as a part of this group that, you know, as a, as a select will, we said, well, that's a little bit out of your scope, but is it, is it time now to say, you know, there's other things that have, because there's a, a number of things that have come up across town um, resulting from COVID and, and the changes that COVID has brought, you know, socially and everything that may be now time for us to look at through this committee as opposed to us looking at through a select board or other, other places in town. So maybe some of those issues around issues that the human relations committee can and should be looking at, whereas in the past we were looking at different, different topics.
Sure. That makes sense to me. Um, we have a meeting scheduled for January. Chris, is your suggestion that we do this um, before that meeting or afterwards, or does that, or does the January meeting that we have scheduled become this conversation that we're discussing right now?
If I may, I, I think what I would like to see is for the HRC to do some of that, that research and look at what other comparable committees are doing. Um, and, and really kind of have a proposal, at least that they're, you know, kind of aligned on, or at least a direction before they come to us um, for that opening. So I, I would like to see that. I also know that the schools have formed a DEI committee. I believe there would be some overlap there. And so I think another place I would like for the HRC to look before coming back and select board is to see what their mission and what their planning is. And to see if there's uh, some sort of collaboration or overlap or, or, you know, whatever may come out of that discussion. So I, rather than just come back without any, anything, I, I think a little bit of research and some direction on, on where the remaining members want to go, if they want to have that, I think would be helpful before coming back to the, the full select board.
That makes sense to me. Uh, the only thing that I might push back on with Chris is that, um, he was saying that, um, we should um, get ourselves situated before we add new members. Uh, I would say that adding new members might help to get some new ideas in there for directions that we want to go and contribute to the conversation. So that's my perspective on that, but I'm open to other people's opinions.
I think the committee is also able to talk to people who are prospective members as well. And so you shouldn't, you shouldn't not talk to somebody because they're not a member. So if they're, they're perhaps able to do that work and help you do some of that research or able to share that experience, absolutely. Um, and then maybe with the new charge, we can appoint those members if they've shown that they've, you know, really actively participated in those conversations and show, um, you know, an interest both in the the mission and in uh, committee work, which is not overall overlapping with some other charges of that. So um, I think that, that might be a good path forward.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jeff. And thank you, Chris, too. I, I agree with, um, everything you're saying here.
Okay, so um, do we wish to do the reappearance for the current members, Elliot and Chief Noble?
Yeah.
Today? Okay. Uh, I'll accept the.
And then we'll, we look at the most and look, look at the charge.
Sure.
Town.
Well, I think, I think they're going to do some.
Yeah, like in months.
When they're ready.
Move to appoint Elliot Frisby to the manning human relations committee with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor? Very good.
Um, the next one is I move to appoint.
Chief, did you have anything you wanted to add before we?
I think the, the, the direction of the committee has had, you know, when we first formed it, it was specifics, so the immigration policies and things. And I think in some ways we worked very well together that we don't have any of those, you know, came to an agreement, this on that. Currently after that, we had good Lloyd and those type of things. We had um, things that we were doing, but since, you know, to check policies of the police and all the good things. But since then, we really haven't had a direction on where they should be as a local committee, we're doing the national things we've been doing. And uh, yeah, I do think we need to get a, a more direction for the committee, what's, you know, the exact shot. And I think that's why I lost one about that. It just seemed to be flattering.
Yeah, I, I think if you take a good look at what other, other towns are doing along these lines, you may find some good positive examples of action items that, that you may be able to implement here in Maynard, um, that, that makes sense for our community. So um, I'm, I'm eager to hear, hear what your report back. So I'll now accept the motion for uh, Chief Noble's reappearance to the committee.
We to appoint Chief Michael Noble to the manning human relations committee with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor? All right. I, I'm going to offer a correction, Chris. It should be the woman who was working with the police department instead of the girl. Especially on an HRC to have that level of respect. I think it's important. You had mentioned the, the girl who was working with, it should be the woman who was working with the police on that. We'll move on to the local emergency planning committee. Uh, we have two reappearance here. Uh, these are both reappearance, correct?
I don't think I've been.
No, I'm sorry. These are, I'm sorry, my mistake. Um, do we have? Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, so. So we just hired health director. Okay, Yvonne.
Go, go ahead and.
Evan.
Hi.
Okay. All right. So uh, there is a health director. Um, so he's new. And we do have the local emergency plan. It is typical for his position to be a member of that. Secondly, we Sarah Terry, she is the patient supervisor and she's been with, working, working with the police department for years now. Um, so that's, it's kind of standard operating and having a go on, but Yvonne is joining us if you have any questions.
Well, first of all, Yvonne, welcome. Uh, I don't, I know that we've had a chance to talk, but I, I hope you're, uh, enjoyed your start here with the town. Uh, would you like to say a few words and introduce yourself?
Yes, uh, my name is Ivan Quagala. Uh, I work for Public Health. Um, I'm just here to answer any question if you have any questions for me. Uh, thank you for having me and for considering me to appoint for appointment. Uh, so, thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Ivan?
I just want to say welcome to Maynard because we haven't had a chance to do that yet.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
No, nothing to say other than welcome and look forward to, uh, having an opportunity to meet you in person.
No, nothing to say other than welcome and look forward to uh having an opportunity to meet you in person.
Sounds good.
Very good. Uh and we do we have Sarah here or not tonight? It will be okay. All right. Um. All right, well, uh if there are no more comments, I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve. I'm sorry, move to appoint Health Director Ivan. Quagala to the Maynard Local Emergency Planning Committee with a term expiring June thirty.
All in favor? Very good.
And I will move to appoint Communication Supervisor Sarah Finney to the Maynard Local Emergency Planning Committee with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
All in favor? All right.
Okay.
Uh moving on to item number six, the Police Department Goals. Chief, are you this evening? Very good.
Yes, always with the person.
Yeah.
For my time, I haven't had too many of these meetings in person.
That's true.
Um well, would you like to just give us a brief overview of of what we're looking at here in front of us and on board docs or if you're following along at home?
Yeah, these uh they manage police department goals and objectives for the year twenty twenty three. I changed it. It used to be fiscal year, but it seems to be easier to do. Calendar year as we usually do them around this time. So we said. Ahead ahead of otherwise. A good portion of the year was already gone by. I present. Uh you know. Obviously, the first goal of May, at least, um yeah, is keep the public safe. To ensure that the residents visit, if anybody comes to town. Save that we also have agreements with surrounding towns to assist because if something happens to their towns, you know, uh it's intertwined. Some of that is to make sure that we're. Utilize best problem solving techniques. Um that we treat everybody no matter race, sex, or identity, the gender, the national region, or any of that. Uh treat them all people. Uh we coordinate, maintain communication with other town departments and other area agencies. Um to make sure we. For a small town, we do have some major installations in town, you know, State Police Farm well, that has logistics that has well. To hide. Value target, if it was ever considered, and the female. You know, for, you know, small town, those are two very big things that we have to coordinate with them. And. We're always looking to educate and solicit ideas uh is, you know. With the second goal. We develop. Internal systems which assure high quality service, meaning while increasing problem solutions. You know, uh we're always, you know, twice a year we have to look at our policies and update them. Uh many a times, especially with the police reform. We've had to. Not overhaul, but luckily, because we are an accredited agency. We already had many of those things that they needed in. Think about when they changed the law, you have to actually add. Word for word what they have uh with that change. So we're always uh up to date on that. With the post certification, we uh certified everybody who was last name A two H. Which was eleven offices. Two posts with no issues, no conditions. They're all fully certified. Uh that's the that part of the accountability of the offices. That, you know, it's it's not the same as it used to be where you can just brush something on the road. Any. Uh I A investigations with that become public knowledge. They go to a database. Keep them to view the offices, you know, histories and the like, but all offices, you know, history and everything like that uh don't have a fact. This coming year. We'll have to do. I two P last names, they're all going to certify. And then um following year, they last. What happened was is when they did the police reform. It was automatic certification for every. This is how they're gonna do it to break it up into three years, so not everybody's getting certified at the same time, because they they were already overwhelmed in June. They were they were telling us. Uh how to submit things the. First week of June and we do by June fifteenth. So had to scramble at the time, but we everybody is certified, we have no issues. They also uh provide top quality training opportunities with professional growth and development, obviously best served the community. Uh I'm very big on training. Except that Deputy Chief. He graduates the National Academy. Two days this Thursday. But I I mean, that's great leadership training, and that's great training all. It's considered the best training for police officers in the country, I believe. Uh but we also go all the offices that have C I T training, which is crisis intervention training, de-escalation training. Uh the regular in-service training and then specific trainings uh for certain thing. Uh myself and another chief, we started uh the Leadership Academy. That just graduated another class. In Tootsbury. We uh formed it with Eric Murray, who used to run the Connecticut State Police. Frankly. Our venue is not big enough that we don't have a big enough training room right now to do it, but. We've held it in active built in and. Build a bond is that trust and legitimacy in community. We have great teams. You know. I I try to, I try to tell that during the last couple of years, you know, there was a lot of negativity with police, but. The offices that didn't uh get to them as much because. People responded and people uh showed, you know, that the community supports them and the offices. You know, showed that. Now, obviously, if anything ever happened, you know, in town here, you know, they're accountable for that. We do have a good uh group of people here that care about the town. I I can say that. I get. Regularly compliments on what how the offices have treated other people. I mean, even when they write tickets, it's kind of. You know, most people aren't too happy about it, but you know, and I've said. Last week, I had somebody's cards over and they said he was so professional, helped me, you know, get to make a call, get me a ride, brought me back to the station waiting. You know, they uh that. We've increased the diversity on department personnel. A lot, you know, which is great because that helps with certain positive community that uh feel underserved. You know. Um well, we've added. Uh know the female, two African Americans, this uh over the last uh two years. We are. Always looking to increase that way, my, but yeah, biggest need and the officers have said is to get somebody who is fluent in Portuguese. Because, you know, we have a. Much grown Portuguese. You you know, whether it's in town or transient through town, you know, we have trouble sometimes uh if you. Anybody trying to find somebody who speaks Portuguese and strong in the town. We are always uh trying to provide the best police services using updated technologies. We've now have two hybrids. We have a hybrid on order and and all electric vehicle coming. That's gonna be uh. The new my my car. I I didn't want to put it as a frontline car because not many have, and I don't want to test it out with with the offices. I'll I'll test it out, see if there's any things that. That would be the goal down the road to get uh something from them past the all. We have it a little easier in town here because we don't have a great size, so it's not like they have to go a lot of areas. But we're not sure on how long they could run, you know, how they run in winter, how long this, so that that kind of why I'll take that. Do you still afford? Uh yeah, it's Mikey, so. And it's it's on order, but I don't know if anybody buy it. But we we want to be hybrid. In August. And I checked again two weeks a week or two ago. And they're looking maybe January fifth. So. It's taking a while, and that's just when the car is gonna be from the back. Uh and finally, the employee defined improvement strategies, the best service to employees' wellbeing. Um this is one thing that I I've had. In fact, I bring in. People who fuck you up about, you know. Last training we added on. Not just mental wellbeing, but physical wellbeing. Food. You know, their diets, all all of that thing, because uh it's. With with everything that's happened over the last few years, you know, the office's wellbeing sometimes gets violated. So. We usually have many a times and even even the uh N B T C, which is the state uh training. They have made it a point to do that. That's one of the six pillars that was the twenty first century police into the office's role. Again, one of one of my things is that we work very well with uh the other agencies and we brought in. Emily Black. She's been a great help. I actually just received this today, so I figured it was something that uh to be certain to bring up. How much, you know, one of my main focuses is just being like crime in town has been down. I think. With less. Alcohol establishments often laid, you know, and not like that. People stay home a lot more than they used to, but. Mental health has gone way, way up. You know, and with Emily's help, it it's been good because now they have two clinicians for the same area. I'm just. A copy of this. This is just our. Recordings for Middlesex County. But how many incidents we've had to handle in the other town? Now, some of these are a little skewed because some of the towns don't input as much. We are actually the old standard uh inputting, but we're told that by the people because we put in. Both behavioral and substance abuse calls. In twenty twenty one, we had a hundred and seventy seven. Um. Office service. That doesn't mean just all. That means Emily did something with the people that were involved. Either followed up, contacted, went on a call with us. In twenty twenty two, we had a hundred and forty three. If you can see the the breakdown is seventy eight percent behavioral health. In twenty one and sixty eight behavioral in twenty twenty two. That's how important she is uh in having somebody with them. You look at the other towns and everything. Like I said, some are underrepresented, some don't put the behavioral health. In um. In these uh Simpson. We put them in because what what this system is, is when somebody else overdoses in another town, but the resident remained, we get notified. So that means we we put like, hey, go to that person's house. If somebody down, we know that person and Emily can reach out to that person uh and give him services. Might it will be somewhere else? Or if they had a mental health issue or if they had this. He's also, you know, she's worked also with, you know, the rest of violence, families, forget them services and. You know, she's better equipped. We can solve the short term problems. You know, we can calm a situation down, we can do that, but we can't fix the underlying problem that's there. She's a big factor. Finally, I'd like to just say, you know, uh very proud of all the offices and all the plans that I have in the power. They are very supportive of, found very supportive of uh the citizens and they want to help and. I couldn't ask for a better group of people. Any questions?
Police staff?
Uh we are down one still, Jimmy. Uh he had to retire. Uh sadly with that booty injury that he got. Um and I was just, I was waiting for. The deputy chief to get back before side eye. We have, we have. Both I uh application that we're gonna do in the school probably in a couple of weeks. As you know.
Twenty seven.
I said, okay, good.
I did want to, I did, I actually commented the teeth. I I walked next to him during the parade and um one of the things that that struck me was that. Of course, no one was waving at me, um but everybody was calling to him and they were all, you know, they wanted his attention. They wanted to say hi. They wanted to make sure he was seen and and I really thought that that was that really that struck me because. You know, that shows how much he is trusted and liked in this community and and I really appreciate that. So I did mention that to him as well, but I want to say publicly.
Well, I think we have a small town and it's a whole different dynamic than what you see on, you know, the news. You see that, you know. We work. I I live in town, you know, I'm a part of the community all, you know. A hundred percent of the time. So I coach, I was coaching, I came here early, but did the meeting randomly, I could have stayed the whole night, that's an. Um, you know, coaching basketball and coaching in town and, you know, I love this town, so. I always want the best.
David?
No, I'm disappointed because I thought when I was walking with the chief, I thought they were all yelling at me.
They like you have. Uh I I had a nicer you.
Just one one question. Um right at the top, uh one, the first bullet point, what are problem oriented policing practices opposed to any other policing practice?
Those those are specific, like to develop, you find out what the problem is and then find specific solutions. It's some something like what we use. We know what the problem is, but you you've got to find a way to. Uh what's the underlying? You know, cause of the problem. Again, I remember we would go to the same houses for domestics when I first, you know, twenty five years ago. You know, um twenty five times a year. Lock up somebody five times uh those twenty five times. Now. We have somebody to go there, try to get services for those people. Uh we have diversion programs too, because, you know, the drug. Uh problems that some people have. You know. Taking services, not, you know, criminal justice, any matters.
Very good. I um just want to highlight a few of the goals I I did appreciate seeing in there. Um the first bullet point number three, looking at the. Personnel, not just the diversity of personnel who you talked about, but um. Personnel that are seeking to emphasize and understand the different diversity we have in our community. We have a lot of people of different races, different ages. Uh people who may have disabilities, people who may be veterans, uh all sorts of different dimensions. And so any town employee for any department who is actively seeking to understand that and how it. Builds our community. I think that's an important skill to have. Um so thank you for including that. Uh I also liked, um oh, and thank you, by the way, for giving the post update just to um help us understand how that's impacting the department, because that was a question I had as well. Uh and then the.
There's there's a lot more.
I I understand that. I'm sure I'm sure we would, we could have a longer conversation. I I may. Ask you about that because I'm very curious to know a little bit more, but um we can save that for some other time when we have a bit more time. Uh no, I liked um. That you're having sustainable projects. I think the technology is changing rapidly, so we need to continuously reevaluate and see what makes sense. Uh again, um for not just your department, but for all departments. And then. Uh number five, um again, something that does apply more broadly. Um you know, I think a lot of different, pretty much anybody who's working now is feeling a unique set of stressors, especially with. You know, shifting supply chains and and personnel movements, but uh we obviously have a unique set of stressors. So I think a lot of organizations, um you know, were. Have to push people into a part where it's counterproductive in terms of what we're able to accomplish as an organization. And so to to. Explicitly call that out, I think, is is wise and to make sure that we're proactively monitoring that and taking steps to to make sure that our our employees are. Not being burnt out, not suffering from over overly fatigued and then keeping that full staff. And then as Chris asked about the staffing, so. The only one that concerned me a little and I I get it is the use of social media, which also makes me nervous. Um I, you know, I think it can come through a lens that. Isn't always reflective of the public's expectations. So I just want to make sure that we're balancing that with, as you mentioned before, direct communications department and and those sorts of things that can be. Uh often more information rich, even if they're coming in lesser volume, but um overall, thank you for sharing the goals.
I have one question, Mike. Just quick, can you do it real quick? What what was the law for the brave thing?
Uh it was gonna be down Severy, left on Main, left on the grate. And left back on the Severy. Uh the walnut, walnut, we just thought like to go down and up walnut, but. The hill. The turn, well, then if you go in the pocket, now we affecting three main rooms. You know, sixty two, twenty seven and one seventeen.
Back, yeah.
The triangle.
Yep.
Yeah, and. We have done it before. We had that as a rule uh for a race a couple of times. Once in a twenty something years.
Thanks.
All right. Um, okay, anything else?
No.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate you uh walking us through your goals.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Good luck to uh Danny's.
I'm sure I'll be glad. And and everyone I've talked to is like, it's a great experience this, but ten weeks is a long time.
All right, next we have item seven, uh which is going to be draft zoning bylaw amendments. Um. We wait for. It's remember, do you want to come on up? All right, sounds good. So we are now just, um my understanding is we are going to move these over to the planning board, who will then review them. Do they come back to us or do they go? Then they come back to us. And so we're. Just uh we're gonna move and and any input that we want to give and have a conversation on what we're looking at.
They'll come back to us virtually to be approved for the warrant for the town meeting.
Yes, the the part, this is a um a requirement by the statute. That any um. Requests for zoning bylaw amendments. You know, because they come to different places, but even the planning boards go to you and then they come back for the hearing process. The planning board conducts the hearings. They don't prove or disapprove it. They they vote whether they're going to recommend approval or not recommend. Here the public hearings comes back to this board. Replacement on the warrant and then so this is the first step.
Okay.
You have them, you have them now?
You have them, you have them now. A lack of a better term, they're in your possession now. So we're gonna ask us to give them back to you, never take them, but give them back to have a public here. I'm I'm just trying to. It sounds like, you know, you have them, they're yours. So you go under the statute, they have to come to us. Give them back, you you know.
I can't say it's always been done like that and in history, but that's what's supposed to be done and we've been.
We're supposed to show our awareness that it's being presented to the public through public hearings to then come back to us.
Right. This is at the hearing for this just saying, planning board. Please, you know, do this.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the only question I have is. And and just, you know, kind of, you know, there's twenty five pages of it, so I didn't read every word, but so it's kind of weird these, what was the impetus for these? Amendments.
Sure. Um, well, if the um, do you have a copy? If the memo uh front two pages.
Do we want to take these one at a time maybe? So we'll. Body art ones first and then we'll.
Yeah, so summaries, I I might answer the summaries are in purchaseable.
Oh, sorry, I should have. I'm sorry. Introduce yourself.
I'm Bill Nung, I'm the planning director.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Arsenal, the chair.
Thank you very much. All right. Yeah, please, if you could, uh, why don't we start with the body art related ones and we'll see if there's any questions and then we'll move on. One subject at a time. So do you want to give us an overview of the the amendments related to body art?
One, one. Um, maybe. I'm just trying to remember how this is organized. The reason I'm hesitating is that. Body art was a regulation that we wanted to clean up. Based on another regulation that we were attempting to change. So. It's kind of housekeeping.
Are are you saying it's connected to the?
It's not connected is that we went through to make changes to a specific regulation. And discovered that this section seven point two body bars. Uh, was was something that we call it technical debt. It was leftover. It just needs to be cleaned up and it'd be a lot. It was, it's an advised change. There wasn't any impetus for it except that we took a hard look at it.
I guess to clarify, could you just, what are the rules and body are we talking about at two parlors or is that too narrow of a scope?
So it, body is, it's section seven point two is, it's the section that describes what the body art is.
Okay. Maybe if I could just raise this question, let's say, taking the example of a tattoo parlor, what are the current rules? For a tattoo parlor that might want to operate and what will the rules be after this change? I think that might help clear things up.
The the current rules a- as it relates to how we're zoning bylaws is one thing. Then there's rules that has to relate to the health department and state of Massachusetts. Our rules in seven point two are almost nonvoid at this point because they're essentially regulated under. Under um pu- public health guidelines in the state of Massachusetts. So as this is written now, basically we have, it's written as uh space requirements. Uh, certain standards, basically hours of operation and the need that they cannot uh. Operate without a valid permit. And then there's. Some dimensional requirements with uh. With an obligation for having parking spaces. And then uh specification that says body art establishes self comply with all signed, all the sign provisions of this bylaw. So it it, there's not a lot in here that's helpful anymore.
I think it's a good summary that. This would be changing if it'd be similar to a hair salon. Okay, so it's reducing some of these to go similar to another businesses.
Yeah, most of it was regulated, most of uh seven point two was regulated in other sections of the bylaw. The, a couple of the questions that Chris said were were brought up um. That there is uh some other issues regarding uh one of the other art um articles that we'll talk about later. Home occupation, but essentially this is just eliminating that section. There were some restrictions that were either duplicate or considered antiquated by the board. Um, and their approach was to regulate it simply as a personal service, like personal honors.
Any questions on exhibits A, B, or C from the memo? Okay, all right, uh, let's move on to uh exhibit D, which is. I'm sorry.
I said that looks like that's a standalone.
Yes, yes, uh, which is related to uh affordable housing provisions. You can give us a brief overview on what we're looking at here.
Currently, um, a lot of our recent mixed use development has involved um. A uh, what we call a reduced area requirement, essentially a density bonus. So you you recall, we've had a number of projects where we have it. Uh, a two part approval, one part where we have the uh planning board special permit process. And then the part where there is a development agreement that's um prepared and typically signed by both boards. Um, that's been very successful for us. It's brought us up our our um. Street or subsidized housing authorities jumped up and we we're happy with that part. The question that the the board um, the planning board had. Uh, and I think it's, and I think it was um. As well, I can't speak for the Affordable Housing Trust, but I think it's been discussed. I'm pretty sure there's support of the issue as well. Eighty percent area median income winds up being um. It takes a kind of wide swath from the metropolitan Boston area, consequently. Eighty percent median income, which is our standard for affordable units, still very high for a lot of our residents. It's been discussed and and we've been talking about probably two or three years easy. It may be more appropriate to look at um. Creating a standard uh for sixty percent, people earning sixty percent of the uh area median income. As a um. As a level for our affordable units. And then that is. We we heard uh, we heard some resistance from some of our builders and stuff that would not be, you know. Might not even be feasible for forced to do sixty percent. Area, you know, building units that were going to um be sold or be rented at that. Level. So as kind of a compromise, um, we thought we would tie it into some of our bonus units. So that you don't have to do it. But if you choose to do and exercise provision that allows for bonus units after a certain point. We're going to um, this by law would mandate that there would be. Uh, affordable to individuals making sixty percent of the area median income. In a nutshell, it's a big nod, but um, that's what that's about. And and so it's a a a attempt to tailor this. What we see is the appropriate fiscal realities and the the limitations of um. Of affordable housing that we've discovered with um creating units or eighty percent of the area median.
I can confirm that the Affordable Housing Trust did discuss briefly this topic. It is generally uh supportive. Donna's here, she's a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, generally supportive of, you know, we didn't vote on it, so I can't say we are supportive of it, but generally supportive of. The proposal, understanding is it applies to the downtown overlay district only in this proposal. And furthermore, the questions came up at our meeting relative to current buildings that are pending, namely. Uh, Jimmy McDonald's current hall in the in the ground. That is, uh, it would not apply because they've already been permitted, so therefore it's only to future. Developments that might go into the downtown overlay district, namely the one that's on the horizon. We were talking about is the corner of uh. Baltimore Street and uh Powder Mill.
That's correct.
But those are only for bonuses.
That's right.
So. I'm guessing that, you know, you can tell me what is, but my my guess is that a bonus unit is anything over and above what the. Standard zoning allows. So if I want to put in thirty as opposed to twenty four, I have six bonus units. This sixty percent would affect those units. Those six units or any of those six units that are um designated as affordable.
Yeah, it's it's broken down for a little further. Um, there's, there's a, um, it's slot, it's a scale where the more, you know, there's a cutoff. That um after a certain amount of bonus units granted, sixty percent will kick in.
Okay.
There there. We also have a. You know, we we thought about ways to create. Additional housing that would be, you know, uh, more reflective of the sixty percent, but. For now, that's the best we came up with. I think it's pretty, you know, it 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 is, the formula is proven successful. So far with the the development and we're hoping that this would uh address some of the problem and.
When you look at the eighty percent numbers, it's it's high. It's high for me. The income levels are high. It that really, it eliminates quite a few people, especially those who are seeking that type of.
So is it, is it? Just so I understand, is it possible? Did a particular project such as the one, you know, on the horizon type of thing? Is it possible they could have a number of units at eighty, another units at sixty?
Yeah.
That that's how that would work?
That's actually how we're designing it. Because what we're looking for is to have diversity in the housing stock. So it it and having them all, if we were designed this to have, say, all bonus units need to be at sixty percent. Our discussion is that that may be. The main presentation is being more prohibited for that type of development. And so we want to balance incentivizing development through the D O D in a way. It's conducive for all stakeholders, but also promoting the the practicality of having affordable housing. Same time we're trying to be that master. So that's, that's what we're balancing out in this. Is there, is there more that can be done? I absolutely um continue to explore those masterful goals. But this was, this was something that we saw as the the next, next good step for the for the D O D.
Any other questions on D?
No.
Uh, I thank you for your attention to that matter. I think that explanation made a lot of sense to me, so I appreciate your your. Attention to the housing crisis that we see in the state and and trying to do our part. Uh, all right, now E through, I believe the rest of them are all connected to uh accessory home based business activity. And a reworking of that section, which is uh got a few moving parts to it. So um, do you want to give us?
Can I give a big picture and then when you tell them?
That sounds fine to me.
So this came to us as a request. Not a specific request, as as a way to collaborate with this, with the zoning board. Well, well over a year ago, I believe it was last September is when we, last September, when we started working with the zoning board on. On this notion, uh, we, from from their experience and then when they came with the planning board about it, we compared that the. What's generally known as the home based business bylaw section in here was essentially antiquated. And it didn't give them zoning board good guidance on how to make decisions when they would have applicants come in trying to use that zoning. To have a secondary or um. An ancillary use on their property and the residential property for a business purpose. It was, that zoning. Bylaw was essentially designed for having a hair salon and a garage and one of the Campanelli, you know, um. Units in the in the maze or something like that. It was. It was made to have a s- small, low impact um business on on the residential property as a secondary use. So we 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 formed a joint committee and then spent time through that joint committee. Um, with the zoning board and planning board to develop. Uh, a much, much better guidance so that they could have good decision making on how to proceed with applicants that improve. More modernist sort of approach. Uh, and so we're at the place where we're ready to take this to um town meeting and and discuss it at that level. So that's the big picture. Um, there's lots of details in here. I believe. You know, we're changing, I think, four different sections of the zoning. So it's, this one is more comprehensive and more thoughtful. Uh, and it's, there's been a lot of effort putting into the decision making itself on all the details. We could continue to describe this all night. So I I want to be cognizant of that and and understand. What's the best way to discuss this again?
So just to the the details, you're taking these. What I'm, correct me if I'm correct in seeing what you're doing here. You're thinking about, I don't know, maybe five or so different categories and lumping them into two. What type of a business or type B business on the whole? Do I have it correct what I'm looking at here?
So the original zoning, as it is now, current zoning. Uh, it doesn't have categories. It has allowed uses and. And essentially implied nonallowed uses. So it it allows certain uses to occur for this type of ancillary business. We're changing that and providing it categorically in terms of how it may um be appropriate and the impacts that that business may have.
I'll open to the select board for questions on these articles.
These, are these. Changes designed to be or they have the effect of being more or less restrictive than what's there today?
That's a tough question, I think. Well, I think, I think, uh, yeah, Chris gave a pretty good overview of that. Um, one other. Um, aspect that comes into answer this Chris's question. There was also, in addition to home occupations, where there was a list of potential uses. That as as uh Chris, plenty more Chris had said that it would, they're antiquated. It was also a trade shop category. And a trade shop was uh things, almost like a blacksmith. So they were, they were similar, but not, not the same. The new uh process absorbs the trade shop into what we're calling the home based business activities. So to answer your question, is it more or less restrictive? The way that the uh boards have worked to try to craft this bylaw is that it's. Regulated by a potential impacts. So if something was noisy, let's say, and was not regulated for whatever reason. It would be. It would fall under what we call a a a type B activity and that would be, that would require a special permit to to mitigate that impact. The same would be um. You know, for any, any sort of um use that was deemed to have. Um, a potential effect on the budding properties or change the character of the neighborhood. So then the the question that that I, what people have been asking um is, well, if if that's. You know, a a type B, what's a type A? And how would we know if a type A is a type B? And and essentially it's saying that the type A, we recognize particularly with the COVID. Uh, the COVID lockdown and and subsequent um business model changes. There's a lot of businesses out there that people that have no impact whatsoever and that you wouldn't even know they're there. Um, and does the town really need to put that person through the special hearing? Uh, or special uh permit process or public hearing when they're doing accounting from the house and nobody comes or goes? Uh, on the other hand, if for whatever reason that accounting business became noisy and it would, or it became an issue. Then it would be brought, it'd be brought probably before the zoning board and then they would say, okay, this is a type B, it's having a negative effect. And so that's, so it it's hard to answer your question, Chris, exactly. Is it more restrictive or less restrictive? I would say it's more flexible. I would say it's easier for the boards to interpret and I would say it has more remedies. For potential problems than our existing bylaws do.
I, I think that, um, and I'm just thinking ahead to town meeting presentation when a zoning issue requires two thirds. And it gets complicated, it's gonna take work to be prepared to present something to town meeting that. People understand is the tendency of town meeting, I believe, over his history is with zoning issues in particular. If it's not clear, it gets, does not get two thirds requirement. So that, well, that's your guys' up that responsibility for presenting.
I, I fully agree and uh I appreciate the uphill battle it's going to take to. Present something that's very cohesive and under, and being able to under, be understood. I I agree there's a complexity here. So I I, there's a need, right? And I recognize a need and it's why I'm pushing forward to help out the zoning board. And I recognize the need and it's why I'm pushing forward to help out the zoning board. There's definitely a need. I also understand the complexity of presenting that need in a way that's understood, so we've spent a lot of time.
Yeah.
We've had a sample already with their two, because we've had two public meetings and we've had a community survey.
Yeah.
All right, so we've heard, you know, people are.
Yeah, some somehow to get sort of a preview of the whole thing beyond just the finance committee hearing and your hearing that are gonna be held months in advance. Be able to have people understand.
I I would like to put some type of schedule together that we're where we understood how how to present this. Um, and and get some collaboration from some of the other boards to get this message out. It's it's a lot. I I fully agree with you. It's gonna be, it's challenging to communicate because of the complexity of the changes.
Yeah.
And 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 to really to to discuss the changes, you know, not everybody understands that I can appreciate that, what we have now.
Correct.
Well, wait a minute.
We'll just think about the town meeting discussions we had in the past on other issues where people argue about things that are already in our.
Sure.
On our bylaws that they wanna, you know, complain about, but that's not what we're talking about and, you know, whatever. So you get the, so just it's a challenge that you guys are gonna be aware of and take on.
Just see any questions?
Yeah.
So. I guess my main question, kind of going back at a high level. I guess I don't understand why we do have restrictions based on businesses versus just the general characteristics of a residential neighborhood, right? So why are we triggering a restriction based on whether they happen to be making money for the activity? If there's a a noise or a traffic or some other disturbance, wouldn't we want that to apply to the entire neighborhood regardless of? If there's a profit motive or not in there?
Well, because we, I, yes, and you're right. And there's a difference between a code violation, okay, so somebody's. Let's say they're not in the business at all and there there's a disturbance.
Mm-hmm.
There's a process for that to, you know, remedy that situation. On the other hand, we've recognized, particularly with with the um. The last decade or so, more and more people are working from home where there is no impact. And um. You you we don't certainly don't want, you don't want to restrict that. But on the other hand, uh, if they're going to do something where there's potential of impact or there is an impact, this gives an opportunity to mitigate it. Uh, by conditions or whatever the case may be that the boards put, the zoning board will put in place. Um, and then to regulate it going forward. So it's it's managed and it's easily, more easily fixed. Than if it was just a random code violation, okay, this may be anyways over here. You gotta go send a code enforcement officer. Now, that's a code, it's a code.
Right. I I I get that, but it doesn't quite, it this restriction is still on the basis of whether or not the person happens to be making money for the activity. So if my neighbor is storing a large amount of hazardous waste, that's okay unless they're doing it as part of a business. That doesn't make sense. Well, that's still, but. So what amount of, but then why do we have it explicitly called out for businesses or?
So we're trying to allow. Certain, we're trying to have some flexibility in allowing ancillary uses of properties for for business. Um, and we were, we're acknowledging that because our community has a lot, there's a lot of community members that use their home. As an ancillary business. If we're in a different town, we wouldn't, we just certainly wouldn't probably wouldn't allow it to.
But but there's other restrictions in here, like um, they they cannot have an employee, right? But so now my neighbor can't say have an employee come on once a week and teach music lessons, but my neighbor on the other side is allowed to have many people come over and have a party every day at two o'clock. So I don't, I don't understand why we would allow that because they're not making money, but we don't allow the person to come in once a week who doesn't live there. To teach music lessons, right? That would not disturb me whatsoever. So why, why do we apply this extra standard to businesses? Shouldn't it be just applied to the entire residential neighborhood?
I I think, I think the the the, that's, that's a great question. I I think the best way to answer that was. And particularly as planning director and planning board, we understand that preserving. The integrity of the residential neighborhood is paramount to most people and in those neighborhoods. And um, if there is a business being operated in. Um. I- in that neighborhood. You're going to regulate certain aspects of it, like you said, with, they're already currently, we regulate um employees, outside employees working, you know. On a, on a property or not. Um, and I think if you um, probably you gave me a good idea for our presentation because if you saw some of the um. Uh, businesses that we have, you know, we may have a, we have roofing operators working out of a, for example. Out of a um residential neighborhood. We may have, you know, um, we have, this year we had coffee roasters, we've had. Um. I mean, all all kinds of stuff and every. One that could be accommodated by the boards, zoning board, I think was. But the emphasis is also, we have to recognize that these are located in residential neighborhoods. It's incumbent upon the town to have the safeguards to ensure that the the area neighborhood is preserved. I think that's the big difference. Why? So somebody comes over and you say, well, well, somebody's gonna come over to the house and. Um. You know. Do work at the house. That's different than if there's an employee coming every day. Think that was the 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 intent behind. And maybe that's something that, you know, is adjusted as the hearings go on.
Well, the, and I, still that that caveat, all of a sudden, the same activity could be allowed or not allowed. Not based on whether it's detrimental to the residential neighbor, but based on whether they happen to be making a profit for it. And that just does not make sense here. And I know you're not changing from, from not that to that, you're relumping. I'm saying that's the issue that seems to be affecting these Z B A hearings that are causing so much disturbances. So I think, all right, you've made an improvement to these regulations, but it doesn't hit the core issue. That, you know, we still have two people, one of whom is causing a disturbance and one of whom is not to me. But the one who's not causing the disturbance is gonna be in violation because they happen to be running it as a business and one who's causing a disturbance is causing disturbance. Is just fine because they're not doing this part of the business and so.
Well, they'll be just fine, that's what I said, that would be a code, so we.
I didn't know, I'm sure, I'm sure I could find examples of here where it would not be a code violation. It would still be causing a disturbance that would shut down a business. I I guarantee you, I can find that throughout there. So I I, again, I think I'll I'll look for it. You have made an improvement. I just don't think you've solved the core problem here.
Are most of your issues that you're talking about noise related or?
That all, any, any, just in principle, why, if it, if it is. The activity, I don't understand why it should be linked to whether or not it's a business, other than saying reporting requirements for taxation and things like that. Um, if if it's a disturbance that is gonna ruin the residential character of the neighborhood, we should. Enforce that regardless of whether it's part of a business or just normal.
Oh, yes.
But that's not what you're showing me here for these updates. I don't see any plans to do that, so.
I I think it's okay. Looking at the sort of noise ordinance or impact ordinance. Uh, is not hard. Planning perfect.
Mm-hmm.
It's not something that would come through us anyways, that would go through the building department or some some other sort of entity in town. It's um, it's just not our oversight. Um, but also at the same time. Um, I I agree with you, like, I I agree, you could find holes, you could find holes in this all day long. Part. Um, what we're trying to do is find that balance and and that allows. Homeowners to have a path towards being above board with their ancillaries in business as long as it has a little impact. Because we want to bring more people under the umbrella. And promote that concept. We want to promote mo-, you know, sort of mixed use of these potential properties if they're low impacted. Very interesting. We, because we understand this is, this is a future sort of component of our, of our, of our community. So we're trying to carve out that path. Uh, this is not perfect, for sure. Um, and we have sessions coming up to see how we can improve it further. This is not final. So this is, this comes to you and comes back to us. Then we open up hearings and we discuss it amongst our board members. Then we can just discuss it further.
All along good, and as I said, from what I've seen, from what I'm understanding, I think it is an improvement, so and thank you for the work that you put into that. I still just, I'm not convinced it solves the big issue that you were trying to solve at the outset. I think you've made a a step, but I I think. There's still a long way to go.
Our, our goal was to support. With a new board with better regulations and a better decision-making. That's the purpose.
Fair.
Uh, does it solve larger problems that you're bringing up? No, not at all. So I completely understand.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Uh. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to refer to draft zoning bylaw amendments to the planning board as presented in the planning director's memo of town administrator dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two for public hearings.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you for your explanation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Green Meadow School Building Committee and so. The building committee has been active for quite some time. What we are here to discuss today. Is the next steps in terms of votes, uh, which are part of the process. For the MSBA process. So we're in the MSBA process. And what we need to do is submit a detailed schematic design that's sufficient enough for the MSBA to provide us with a project and project scope and budget agreement and a funding agreement as well. Um, and so I I have a few questions on the actual mechanics of that. Do we have, who do we have representing this project?
This is, I'm a little glad. Thank you, Phil, for your time. So this is Philip Palumbo. He's from Colliers and he's our contracted. Um, owner's project manager. So he, he was one of the first sort of like. People that we hire as as a community. And then he helped us go through the process, just like most of, mostly other major building projects, except the MSBA is highly controlled. Um, but anyway, so Phil's been with us from pretty much the start and then um we hired the insider. And then Phil kind of holds his hand in submission to the MSBA and and his team, Colliers, a lot of experience, very grateful. They do a lot of assessments. And um, and and helping with the building. Otherwise, you you did hit all the notes, uh, Mr. Chair, and it's it's all about the timing, so. Um, then the next building committee meeting is scheduled for the nineteenth and the next regular scheduled, it's like we're meeting is scheduled for the twentieth. So the concept is that the, at the building committee, they'll, they'll approve recommendations to submit to the select board. To approve, presumably, to then submit to the MSBA for that P S B A.
Do we have the chair of the Green Meadow Building Committee with us tonight?
No, I don't think he's able to try to see. Jerry Colbert is the chair.
Yes, that is disappointing. Um.
Good evening, Mr. Palumbo. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Do you want to give us a quick introduction?
Sure.
Give us a quick introduction of yourself and then um if you could give us a a high level, what are the particular votes we're discussing? And what is the current status of the overall project?
Sure. So Phil Palumbo, Director with Colliers Project Leaders. As uh Mr. Johnson mentioned, uh, we're the owner's project manager on the project. Um, in terms of. Where we're at and kind of the the next steps in in front of us in terms of the Green Meadow Elementary School project. We are in the schematic design phase. Um, we are due to submit our schematic design submission to the MSBA on December twenty-eighth. So part of that submission is showing, um, you know, certified building committee meeting minutes that the building committee voted to approve that submission. Within that submission, not only is it, you know, the the schematic design drawings and engineering narratives, but also project scope and uh project budget. So you got a, you got a construction budget and then a total project budget. So that'll be an element that we're gonna um have the building committee vote to approve on on December nineteenth. And then, as Greg mentioned, the goal is to have the select board also vote and approve that um on December twentieth.
Um, now. Greg, we, I had asked for some information relative to the options on the Green Meadows School Building Committee uh. Or and the select board in terms of timing of the project, which I'm not sure if they made it to the meeting packet.
They did.
Okay, could you give us a verbal overview of what those are?
Absolutely, and I'm just gonna s- uh. Take uh credit for the work that Phil did in very short notice to give me that information. Uh, which was verified, and we got a little bit of book in the SBA. So. Um, the timeline right now is set up to that by the end of December. To submit the the P S B A, or I'm sorry, to submit the materials to to create the F P S B A. Which is the agreement with the MSBA, which is the state, um, in order to meet this MSBA's board meeting schedule. And have a reply and have have everything um. Set for the May annual town meeting to approve. Whatever the funding mechanism mechanism may be, presumably it is a borrowing authorization. Um, funded through a debt exclusion for the project. And if we weren't going to have a submission to the MSBA by the end of this month. Um, Bill and the MSBA does verify there are other options, however. Um, the understanding now is that the MSBA is expecting this submission by the end of this. In order to have their board schedule and then eventually the lineup with the May annual town meeting. And by the way, um. Uh, borrowing authorization, um, and a debt exclusion vote particularly does require two actions from voters, both the town meeting and then. Separate election. I mean, the plan was was to have that election. Um. Uh, mayor June, probably in June. And um. So if you don't, if you decide to change, like, this has to be decided in short. Like, in short time, because the MSBA needs to know, so the MSBA can sort of consider the other, their own internal procedures, those board meetings. In order to be at a different timeline. Which then also kind of pushes out our requirement of when to have the town meeting therefore. But again, as as is pointed out in the response that Phil was kind enough to give, um. It's, oh, yes, it's a matter of convenience and also cost to have the vote taken at the annual town meeting because we're already planning ahead. And I'm meaning that May fifteenth, you don't have to have it on May fifteenth. Um, it's it's actually incidentally a vote later in this agenda, whether you want to have that annual town meeting at a time. Um. But that was the expectation for a number of months now, as as Phil pointed out, that's that's the direction that his team. Um, was given and then gave recommendations for. Um, but I don't know, frankly, I don't know, based on the tone of the of the reply from the representative from the MSBA. Don't know how uh amenable that MSBA would be to a change in that expectation that they're getting the recommendations by the end of this month and therefore a change in the timeline. I don't know. Maybe, maybe it would be of little impact. Uh, or maybe it would be significant. Again, the, and I know, I know this doesn't fall on deaf ears. It it is a partnership, so we are trying to abide by um. Uh, a a sort of agreement, a partnership with the MSBA. They are paying for a significant portion of of this project. Um, so we're trying to meet their rules. And a lot of this is very much MSBA-driven. It's unlike a lot of other projects. So. Things are just out of the way.
Okay, uh, and just, just to summarize all of that, the that I'm looking at this option three, that would be a four-month. Increase in the timeline that we're looking at compared to the December.
Uh, yeah, that's. Um, so in this case, what we, what we are referring to, Mr. Chair, uh, based on the. On the, on the good work that Phil did and verified by the MSBA. Um, schematic design submission in this, this option would be April twenty-seventh. Um, again, that's what we're looking to do by the end of this month.
Yeah.
Uh, followed by the MSBA Board of Directors meeting. Uh, for the project scope and budget, which would then be June twenty-first. And then the deadline for the town meeting votes at plural um would be uh October nineteen. So yes, it would, it'd be a number of months extension. Um, but again, the the the. Building committee chair is not here. Um, but I I don't know with the direction of the building committee. So if the building committee. Meets on the nineteenth and they submit to the board that they're they're comfortable with their recommendations. I mean, I don't, I presume that is gonna happen.
What happens if the board then decides?
To not, right, then according to the direction from the MSBA, we need to contact the MSBA and see what impact it may be. I don't know if if you want to, I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you'd allow Phil to kind of speak to that.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, there's two. What happens if we just don't submit designs versus we ask for an extension along that? Four-month timeline or or the middle option, um. No, I I think we have two members on the select board who are part of that committee, so I would like to hear from them on where we're at right now.
Can I say?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I I wanted to, I want to start because um. I have a lot to say about this. Um, I have been involved in the process since the initial MSBA call uh in twenty nineteen. Consistently expressed my concern about having um and advocate for a right-sized project. Um, actually, after the phone, the initial phone call with the MSBA. I did actually email Sherlock in the form of treasurer to find out what the tax impact would be. Because at that point, we were still considering a new fire station also. So I'm well aware of the cost of a project like this. Man. It is frustrating to be told that I'm the only one that mentions a budget. Um, because, and that concerns me because. My job here is to look out for all the residents of Maynard and that includes the. Roughly thirty-four hundred residents that are over the age of fifty-five. We only have about thirty-two hundred households. And we only have a ten percent commercial tax rate, tax base, so you have ninety percent of this is going to fall on thirty-two hundred households. So, and that's thirty-four, thirty-two hundred uh individual households, sorry. But I want a successful project and that's ultimately my goal. It's been my goal from day one, but in order for it to be. But I want a successful project and that's ultimately my goal. It's been my goal from day one, but in order for it to be successful, it needs to have a project, a project that the residents can afford. And what concerns me is a few different things. Um, the first is our, our, we did bring forward the um electric school, the electric um HVAC system. And I did agree with that. Um, that vote. However, in the meantime, we have talked about the amount of training, service, maintenance that is going to have to go into that. That's just going to have to be added to the school operation budget. Which we all understand. But. We also know that we don't have additional money to give to the schools for their operation budget. So. A- and basically what the conversation has been is that we'll figure it out. Unfortunately, what has happened, what happens in our town several times over is that. We. We get blinded by the process and we, we want a new building, we want to do something and we put it forward. But we don't think of the maintenance and the requirements that come afterwards. And so we end up with a reputation of a town that doesn't take care of their buildings. And it's not because we don't want to, it's because we can't afford to. It's because our residents can't afford to. So what concerns me about this project is that we haven't been given any options on how to downsize. It's basically, we've been given a timeline. Like I said, I'm. There are times in this project I've been embarrassed to admit that I haven't known what I'm supposed to be doing because I feel like. Conversations are happening somehow. Or, or people are already on board and I don't know why. And it's finally after this last forum, I came to the conclusion that I could not stand by and watch this go forward without saying something. And I emailed the chair the day of the forum before the forum started to say that we needed another, because at. At the last building committee meeting, I did say I did not want to wait. Until December nineteenth, to the day we had to make the decision to get the information. But everyone agreed that that was probably the best way to do it. So on the day of the forum, I emailed the chair of the building committee saying I wanted a meeting because I didn't think that that was gonna work. On Friday, I emailed the chair again saying I want a meeting because I don't think this will work. I have yet to hear from the chair of the building committee. So that is where my frustrations lie at the moment.
Well, I don't have that kind of list. However, I, my um, my frustrations that come out of the, came out of the um forum and I've shared them is. Um. That several people within our community. Who have been down this road or in other, other building projects and who are um. In positions in their day to day life where they have some um. Knowledge or expertise in certain areas. Kind of raised some questions about some of the items and some of the things that's. The building committee is looking at and they, in my opinion, at the forum. Um, David just swept away and there was, you know, thanks for the comment, you know, thanks for the comment, but have a nice day. Um, you know, specifically some of the um. Uh, sustainability committee issues and some of the things that came from a, a correspondence from the sustainability committee. I think that um, you know, several people spoke out on the call about some concerns they had about some of those things and. How they would affect the project, how, how the, with the potential for around. You know, safety considerations, um, cost considerations, any, any number of considerations that I just. In my opinion, you know, that, that's the um. That's the goal of a forum like that is to get some of those things out into the um. Public eye and have discussions about them and have them lead to other discussions. But I have yet to see. Um, anything come from anybody that's been um. Disseminating the information from our committee. That addresses any of those concerns or even mentions that those concerns were um raised. And that's, that's my biggest concern and I'll have, you know, I'll have, you know, we'll absolutely be. Having that discussion at the next meeting, but I, that's my concern and that's my. Biggest concern in being a member of that committee that's going to come back and sit on this committee. And suggest to others that we support the plan when, you know, some of those um. Some of those concerns, at least in my mind, seem to be valid and, and nobody addressed them in, in, in the way that. If somebody raised a concern, you would expect somebody with expertise to tell them why their concern. Um. Doesn't have any effect on this project. It doesn't, doesn't fit, fit in this project. It's not, you know, it's not um. Part of the concern I should have for this project. And I'm waiting to hear somebody respond to some of those folks in that way, tell them why their concerns are not valid. So, you know, until that happens, I'm not comfortable suggesting that we support this at all.
Be honest, I'm not comfortable with, with a fifty, you know. And I understand that that's the high end, but I'm not comfortable with fifty-four million dollar share for the town. I don't, I, I've had conversations with. With average residents who don't have anything to do with town government or, or buildings or anything else and. They just look, they, they just look at me point blank and say, I just don't understand how someone thinks that that'll actually pass the ballot box. Because people will come to town meeting and they will vote it forward at town meeting. But. I can't be confident that that would pass at a ballot box because that is a huge undertaking for any resident in town.
David.
Well, uh. My concern stretches from hearing my colleagues who we asked to sit in on. Uh, on the, on the committee. Um. And sort of be our ears and, and voice at, at those committee meetings. I have not attended them because I, for many reasons, I think first off, I want to avoid uh having a quorum there, but more so, I don't want to have any in, indication of influence or anything like that on my. I, I'm always concerned about um. About costs affecting community and I've been out, you know, outspoken on that over the years. Relative to our increasing cost of living here in Maynard. I'm also frustrated whenever we have situations come up and you guys know this as being colleagues on this board. That on a given evening, when you are presented with documentation, you were then asked to vote something forward. And then when you're up against timeline that's created that forces you into that situation, that makes it even. Uh, a worse situation where you're now feeling that the pressure is on to make a decision that may not be in the best interest of a community. So from what I'm gathering, um, this, you know, the, the building committee is going to be asked to. Move forward with a proposed project. A schematic design and everything else. And. Not all of those issues have been fully vetted. And properly vetted and properly analyzed and reviewed. That does not mean that we as a community don't or we don't. Desire to have a, a solution to the Green Meadow issue. Uh, in my eyes, that's not, that's a different discussion. But now that we are in a position where we are, uh. I don't forget the fifty million dollar number or whatever it was you just talked about. Uh, that's a scary number. And is it the best number that we could do for the town of Maynard? I don't know. I haven't attended those meetings. Um. But I'm concerned about the sort of a rush, it seems, to make a decision on the information just provided to one that evening. Uh, that's been requested. And I don't know, has that, has that information been requested?
What?
In the, the information you're waiting for that's going to be presented to you.
It's not, it's not finished yet.
So it's not finished. But it was requested.
So I wanted to meet before we met, before this, before that final meeting. Because I don't know what's on it. So I don't know how to translate it and I, I. I don't build schools. So I'm.
Yeah, I understand.
You know.
Uh, so those are my comments.
Yeah.
That I'm concerned about, uh, ill preparation on the part of. And you know, the tendency of a committee like that will be, I've worked hard enough on this. I want to vote it through and now we're stuck with them. And that affects the town of Maynard for years to come. On, uh, on the residential tax bill and on what we've got.
I'll, I'll add a few of my own concerns here. Um, yeah, I have a liaison sustainability committee. I know that they've been frustrated by a lack of clear timelines or when things will come up for a vote. So. You know, items like the HVAC discussion happened and I don't think anybody was told. So. When the discussions do happen with the sustainability subcommittee, they seem to be good, but it's been hard to figure out, you know, uh, timing of those and then having the correct subject matter experts attend those. And getting, you know, true conversations along the lines of what Justine was talking about, about how these different factors intersect with each other. Uh, I think one example I was pointed out is. Going on an HVAC system, the school building committee, and there were numbers for lifecycle estimates and I'm told they didn't factor in the various incentives that are available for. So they didn't have accurate costs, but since to David's point, they were asked to vote on numbers that they were seeing for the first time that night, there was no opportunity to go back, revisit and do any sort of independent check. And now we're running to the same problem, but on a bigger scale where all of a sudden there are schematic designs, which. I understand, and I, I don't have confirmation of this, are supposed to be. Ready on the twelfth and then the committee is supposed to vote on them on the nineteenth and that's, there's absolutely no. Room for any sort of input along the lines of what I think all three of my colleagues have now mentioned. And so those are, are two of my concerns. Um. I also, in correspondence with our chair of our planning board, uh, who wrote, I think about a month ago to the design team, some concerns and he shared some of those with me over the weekend. Um, Mr. Chair, would you be willing to speak at a high level to what those concerns are, just so that the full select board can hear them on the um. Feasibility for the site and some of the infrastructure that would need to go on there?
Just curious. So these, are these the, uh, the ones that we saw in the email that was forwarded? Okay.
Thanks for, Chairman, I'm happy to speak about it, uh, for the record of Chris Arsenal, Chair of the Planning Board. Um, so I can speak about the planning board concerns, but I think the more concerns that are more. Pressing at the moment would be concerns from my professional experience and background. So I'm speaking not as chairman of planning board, you know, but as. As a member of the community. Is that, is that fair?
Absolutely.
Good. For the record, you should give your address.
My, yes, I'm a thirty-four partner.
You're, you're also on the committee.
Not in the building.
Oh, you're not, you are.
So I'm holding two perspectives right now in my mind. I've. Been watching. I find that the committee has done really good work. In the last couple of months, particularly looking at the school building itself. But what I've also noticed is that there hasn't been much attention paid to the site development considerations of this particular location. And I find that the. The, the location of the building itself has unique challenges that it presents. And I, I emailed what I found to be these challenges to Chairman, um, the Chairman.
Colbert.
Committee. Um, back, I think around, around Halloween. And the first challenge I see is that. Um. The, the school is being built on top of an area that the back field behind Green Meadow. That has unknown soil conditions that we simply. Have not evaluated for either geotechnical or environmental. And my understanding is that they're currently going through that, that evaluation process. Uh, the challenge is that I don't know if we're going to provide, you provided information in time to really evaluate it. And if we provide, if we, if we find information that. Is challenging for the project and say may add premium costs, don't really have much of an option on how to pivot. Because there's simply not time. If we have time to pivot with that information, you can change design plans. You may be able to move the school location. But my understanding is once we go to the MA.
MSBA.
MSBA, we're essentially locked into that design itself, particularly that location. So it's, I would really love the opportunity to be able to pivot if we have information that's not conducive for building that project there at that specific location. The second challenge I see is. Um, that the project will be, will be required to remove tens of thousands of tons of soil and bedrock. And currently at the moment, Massachusetts is, is experiencing a. A soil disposal challenge. And which means that our landfills are, are filling up. And so this will add premium costs that I, that I don't think is going to be captured through the typical process of budgeting for this type of institution. The third challenge is, I see is, is. Construction itself and site access. I find that particular location to be very challenging to access. The site from a construction standpoint. How you get vehicles back there, how you get equipment back there, where you put, equipment, where do you put slow stop piles? Uh, it's not, I would, so to summarize, if this particular building was. And I'm not suggesting to build it in this particular location, but if it was being built in the soccer field behind Fowler. I would have, I would not carry these same three concerns. These concerns are specific to the site. So if we find that the information that we receive in the next week or so is not conducive for building, there's not much we can do. So my concerns are tied to the timeline and the specific location. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I believe you've provided the bite email to the design team as well, correct? Yeah, thank you very much.
I'm just wondering from Chris and Justine's viewpoint. Uh, early on in the process, weren't those types of issues discussed relative to site plan, site location?
Not really. It was, we were given, um, so we were given the schematic designs to, to, or the, the, the initial designs to look at. And, um, so add Reno. Um. Add, so there was, there's. Code upgrades, which means everything stays the same and we just upgrade the code. Um, add Reno, which again obviously means as it says, um, and then the new school. And I believe. Most of the new schools were in that location. Um, I might, yeah. Um, the add rounds obviously were, were a little different. Um, but that was, and again, that's a concern, that's a question I have is. Um, you know, part of the reason. That we went, you know, one of the reasons. I didn't choose and add Reno is because uh the MSBA doesn't cover swing space. So we would have to uh come up with swing space for, for the kids while the construction is going on. However. Um, I don't believe MSBA covers a lot of the site issues either. So, you know, has there been a cost analysis about that? So, so I do feel like. I do feel like. There were conversations that were missing and I, I'm finally to a point where I'm not comfortable saying yes anymore.
All right, I, I want to kind of bring these and collect them into kind of two large. Large challenges that I think the Green Meadow School Building Committee will have to address. Um, one is basically a large list of concerns that we all just went through, all four of us, and I believe there may be others out there. Indeed, and the fact that we don't seem to have a process to. Collect those comments. Have the team evaluate them, have the design team evaluate them and then get them back to both the full Green Meadow School Building Committee and to the select board. Before they're going to make a vote. I don't see any way that they would be able to do that before the vote on the twenty-eighth, which is why we're about to talk about the timeline. The second challenge is there's clearly just a lack of communication. Between a lot of different people who need to be talking to each other. So it's more of a structural problem with the way the committee is being run. And also before I want to vote yes for this, which I really do, and I want to stress that. I want to get to yes on a project here, but not if there's. Um, a lot of hazards in between us that we think may be out there, but don't have clear visibility to. Uh, so I need to be convinced not only that, that list of concerns is going to be addressed, but I want to be convinced that the way this committee is being managed. Is going to change fundamentally so that when further concerns are coming up as we go through this process. We have confidence that they will be addressed in due time. And, and at a very quick time because the MSBA timelines as we're looking at are not forgiving whatsoever and we're, we're burning way too much right there. I want to now turn to the timeline question specifically. And so I, we've, Greg wanted me to throw to Mr. Palumbo. Mr. Palumbo. We're going to put aside all of the individual concerns for a moment. Um, and I think we'll, because there's just too many, I think, to address right now. I think we'll need to discuss a process. Can you specifically tell us what the implications of delaying the vote? In terms of um getting schematic designs to the MSBA will be?
So technically speaking, option two and option three, as Greg mentioned. Those are dates that fit within the, our feasibility study agreement with MSBA. As Greg mentioned though, the issue is for the past, you know, five to six months or so. We have been, you know, you provide monthly reports to MSBA on, on where the project's at, et cetera. They have been planning, so kind of doing their financial planning, cash flow, et cetera. Assuming we were going to be doing a just December twenty eighth submission, assuming project scope and budget agreement March one. Um, and kind of from the, going into the rest of design, um, if, if it got local approval. So when they say. If you're going to make a change, we want to talk with you all. That's them saying, we've been planning for this. I want, I want, I want to hear from you and I, the town, the bill, the committee, the district, and I want to. I want to get a good feeling that you all want and are ready for this project. That, that, if you were to ask me, and this is just me, I, I can't quote MSBA. I've had enough ongoings with MSBA. That's when, when, when. That's when 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 uh, an adjustment like this is thrown at them, that's where their heads at. Their their concern is we're going to be. A a another project that went through the feasibility study process, got to the local vote and field. So they they want to, they want to sit with us and and hear from us and understand, okay, it's. It's just this, there has been maybe a lack of communication, maybe people feel like these certain topics haven't been dug into well enough, okay? They're going to still be abiding by the timeline, understood? Go ahead. That's what my gut tells me would be kind of the conversation with M S B A.
There's, there is no maybe about a lack of the items that are being dug into or a lack of communication. I think we're seeing that quite clearly. So I think, I think the Green Meadow School Building Committee has a lot of work to do. To prepare. Now, my understanding is they will have to present to the M S B A before the twenty eighth or submit some sort of communication.
Feed the boards and so, so.
All right.
You know, you are the owners.
Okay.
Just as you are the appointing authority.
All right.
So that's, it's the, it's the school building committee that's, they only submit their recommendations to the owners. Just the board.
All right.
And then you submit it. So I I I I really like this sort of. I'm appreciative of those of those assessment that, you know, again, can't hold you to it, right? He's not the M S B A, but but he's, he. I think it says in the right spot, or at least it, I'm on the same page as him, is that I I think it's worth the conversation with the M S B A. Again. I think we should have the school building committee chair here and that's sort of better saying that that's what's going to happen. I'm also interested in, I think I would emphasize with the M S B A that there may be some outstanding, various serious concerns, geotechnical soil relocation, otherwise. But I I think the M S B A, again, they're looking. They don't want to, they want to make sure that we're not getting cold feet because they were invested. So we want to make sure that they're getting good investment. They're getting a return on that investment, and we're true in our due diligence. If if I may, um. It it's, it is in some sense, new information that we have. That that field is could potentially be compromised. So, and that's something that we think needs to be addressed and evaluated.
Which field are you talking about? The one behind Green Meadow, current Green Meadow School?
Yes.
When you say, when you agree. Would we? The the plan, the community?
The, well, I'm, I'm pretty sure that that environmental site assessment is going to present. Some compromised scenario. That will. That we should, that we need to evaluate. And what I'm saying is that's, that's, we're putting that on the table. We're saying that needs to be evaluated. Yeah, we we really want to do a diligence on this. That's, that's right. In my opinion, it sounds feasible that the the M S B A could could be. You know, very willing to entertain this consideration that we just need more time and not and not because we have cold feet necessarily. It, but just to say like, like, we just want to make sure this is the right investment for all parties. That's, that's how I would.
And we want to make sure we get to a yes, and ultimately that's it.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, can I just jump, jump in real quick? So a lot of stuff talked about, so, so in terms of geotech borings, they have been done. I I don't have the plan in front of me, but. Say two or three, and don't quote me, but the ones that could be done without removing trees that are. Generally within the the proximity of the proposed building footprint have been done, and they do not show unsuitable soils within the foundation depth. So geotech borings have been done, a phase one environments, environmental site assessment has been done. So, so in in in. By no means am I saying subsurface exploration is behind us, I'm not saying that at all. Uh, every single M S B A core program project. That scope continues on post the local vote. It doesn't, it doesn't stop at submission of schematic design. It's just when you're going through the feasibility studying schematic design, you 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 bring it, you you get. A solid chunk of that done to get a solid understanding of cost capturing at the schematic that design estimate. And then once you get the local vote approval, you kind of finish it off. So that's where the project's at. It 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 hasn't been a lack of just not doing it. That that's not the case.
Am I correct if I'm interpreting the rest of the board that? I I don't see personally a path where I can get to yes on the option one timeline where we would need to submit a schematic design by the twenty eighth. Am I, do I have the rest of the board's agreement on that? Yeah, yes.
Sure.
Okay, so then we need to set up that conversation with the M S B A, um. My, and I just listed my two things, what I want to see.
When's our next meeting?
Well, I am willing to hold, this is such a big project for the town. If we need to have an ad hoc meeting for this, then we will have an ad hoc meeting for this, but next.
Our next scheduled meeting is today, six, so the twentieth?
That's correct.
Correct, yeah. So, I mean. You know, I think that.
I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, I know you invited, so I'd like to see the the chair of this committee. Or or others who, you know, on the committee will have part in this. You know, come in and answer some of these questions and speak to, speak to Chris's questions, speak to some of Justine's financial questions. You know, discuss what 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 will be done and what was done with the. Questions raised at the forum, you know, what, you know, you know, some of those, some of those most basic parts of the conversation on the twentieth. I don't know what happens to twenty eight.
I, I want to add on to that. I want that, I want, what I would like to see is for the designs, and I'm told they're going to be written the twelfth. Is to be posted publicly and allow members of the public to comment, make sure that all the comments are recorded and make sure that the design team. Responds to them and make sure all that information gets back to. Uh, the Green Meadow Building Committee or the Select Board before they're required to take important votes on this project. And in the meantime, I think we have to make sure we set that process up so that before we go to the M S B A. We have. A plan to say how we're going to get this project back on track.
Yeah.
Um, what, what mechanistically is the step that we would take in terms of informing the M S B A? Or or having a conversation?
So I I was gonna, I was gonna write all these notes, and then, and then actually I'll stand time watches for it, and then, um. Because he needs to jet up the agenda for the nineteen and the S R.
I, I think he needs to get an agenda quicker than that, but let's continue.
So good, but, um. Yeah, Phil, can you speak to like how, like, how could we, we, meaning the primarily the school building, they engage with the M S B A?
Yeah, so I would quite literally reach out to Diane Sullivan as early as tomorrow and tell her how tonight went and set up that meeting. And it would be a, you know, probably a virtual Zoom, a Zoom meeting and as soon as possible.
The meeting would need to happen before the twenty eighth. Is that the same deadline as the, what's the deadline in which to have that meeting?
Based off of how tonight's conversation went, I don't see um, that it would be appropriate to delay that, having that meeting.
Okay, so, um. Who would be at that meeting?
So. So O P M designer, um, Greg should be there, super superintendent, superintendent Ha should be there. Build a committee chair, uh, Justine should be there. And I I would say those would be. Those would be the folks.
Say about the the owners, the school building committee, who certainly is endorsed by the school.
I don't want to, as a select board, set that meeting up unless we have. Agreed amongst ourselves what we want to see in terms of a change to the process going forward. So I I put my proposal out there about having a very public. Process in which we can get, uh. A lot more technical review and firm response from the design team, um. What else would we like to see as we move forward?
I'm aligned with your. Uh, suggestions that we need to have. Answers to the questions that are out there that are not just sort of sweeping answers, but rather. Uh, thoughtful answers to some of the questions that exist.
I mean, honestly, my my biggest question is how to reduce the scope of the product, how to reduce the cost of the building. Because the building when we voted on it was an eighty five, eighty six thousand square foot building. And now it's up to ninety thousand square feet. And that was, that was, and I understand that things happened during, in the design process, and I I do understand that. But, you know. Again, the the price tag is the number i- is the problem for me, uh, already, and I realize the costs have gone up and I realize that we're involved in time. But when, you know, when the original budget went out, it was supposed to be between a. Total, total between a forty five and seventy thousand dollars, a seventy million dollar project. And so. The fact that. This is what we're looking at right now. I. I I need to see other kind of options. I need to have confidence that, and I know that that's the reason, that's the reason we went with M V G. I know that that's the reason that, you know, we we fought for M G, I I fought for M V G because that's what they have a history of doing. And I know that, but I haven't seen it, and I don't know if it's because it happens. Internal, but there there's nothing coming out that says, okay, you know what? I understand you express concern with this, we'll do this. You know, the the only, the only, I I express concern of going eighty five thousand square feet to ninety thousand square feet in the end, and the. It, which, when you extract, when you extrapolate it, basically. It came out to like a. Two point five to three million dollar increase in the in the cost of of the project. And what I got back was, well, that's not actually really true because we save costs here and there. But if somebody was going to. Ask for a ninety thousand square foot project, they would be given that higher number because that's the estimate you use. So I haven't seen any kind of. Any kind of cost savings or any kind of, you know. Yeah, I haven't seen any kind of cost savings that has made me feel comfortable about this.
And I think, um, you know, hearing your cost escalation, uh, even from the first proposal. Uh, that concerns me, yes, but more so hearing tonight's discussion, uh, and this is the first time we've really engaged in this discussion at the board. Uh, the comments that Chris has brought up that bring in the hidden costs that we are not, that would be on the backs of the main and taxpayers, by the way, with. Uh, without any, uh, uh, you know, matching. You know, if we have problems with the with the land back there.
I would say those costs are unknown.
Those.
And there's potential for premium.
And they could be huge based on what you've described. And they would be on our backs. We can't, we can't afford to, uh. You know, we can't, we can't afford to do smaller things, let alone big unexpected. On top of a forty million dollar hit already, then add on to that unexpected cost. These things should be vetted out and we should know what we're into and what things are at. That catches me back, I know it's water under the bridge, but the whole issue of the fact that the the original project, as expected from the town side, at least from the select room side. Was not necessarily branded a school and that was it. And apparently that's the way we bid it out to the state, which was unfortunate. Where we didn't have the chance to re, you know, to really work on the green metal building as it is, they wouldn't let us do it.
Um, we we had that option to, we we chose the option for the new school at this point, but we did have the option to try, to to do just code upgrades.
All right, let me see if I can summarize for the board what we would want to see and basically charge this group that's going to go talk with the M S B A about.
So I, and the thing about, so I think that there's two parts to that.
Yeah.
So I, and and Phil correctly, if I'm wrong here, but I believe that the M S B A pretty much. Leads that conversation.
Yeah.
Um, and it is more that, um, we would, um, we would explain. A reason for wanting to extend the timeline to the fall while confidently saying that we're still continuing to. Pursue the town, you know, the town is taking a pause because they want to see this successful project. Come to fruition.
Right, so we'd better be aligned on what that answer is for that obvious question from the M S B A. So I just. You see what I'm saying? Well, I don't want to go to the M S B A and say we need more time. I want to say we need more time and we're going to one, put in a process, evaluate some of these concerns, which. Really is in service of some of the other options we talked about, uh, not other options in terms of, um. Combine that with a better understanding of the price for the key decisions makers involved. And I think we need to. Be willing to listen to him as B A or or ourselves consider restructuring or adding membership and expertise to the Green Meadow School Building Committee. Um, to make sure that we have the right. So I think we need to have some proactive changes that we're willing to make as a select board.
There is a legal issue relative to who's on the committee because it's limited by the state.
The state does have very descriptive, like, who's going to be on it? Uh, but, you know, there's some.
All right, uh, and then all of that is in service because we think. The extra time that we would get for the M S B A is in service of getting to a successful town meeting vote. So the delay. Increases the chance that we can get to yes on the project and that's, that's the bottom line.
Yeah.
What, Greg, do you need from us right now to?
No, this is.
Set up the chance for success if I had possible, and that's a.
So I I fully agree with with Phil that we need to contact the M S B A like ASAP. I I'll admit to you my reluctance to engage that without Jerry. Is the chair, he, you have appointed him. And, um, as your chief of business officer and chief procurement officer, I will, I can work with Phil, we can contact, and, you know, we email Diane from the M S B A. Frankly, I just want to be fair and respectful of the chair. So, uh, I will try to reach out to him tomorrow. Um, to try to, if I can inform him of this deliberation. And, um, in the meantime, perhaps, Phil, could you reach out to Diane and just see her availability for, um. Today, Tuesday, so maybe Friday?
Yep.
Or early next week, you know, I I'd like to do it as soon as possible, but I don't know Jerry's. So, but next week could be. Sooner than later, but and particularly even before, uh, we even think about hosting the meeting for the Green. Medical School Building Committee on the nineteenth, which I think we should still have. But I I think that, I think that, like. What we're discussing should should be. Said it to the Green Meadow School Building Committee as well.
Okay.
So I think I have enough to say.
Well, yeah, and then.
A lot.
Right, um. Okay, and then we we just have to wait for the results of that meeting, so.
Well, yeah, well, right.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Thank you, Phil, for your time. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, Chris is in the committee.
They both take them all.
No, 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 no. Thank you for the information.
Uh, no motion on eight. So I mean, no more comments, we'll move on to number nine. We have a series of contracts. The first is the. Community Choice Electricity Aggregation Contract. So we we had them in several meetings ago now. I don't remember exactly when. Uh, and this is basically, they provided us with a contract. We reviewed it through our town council. And this is simply to allow them to form a plan for us. There is no cost to us today. And we can still back out if we don't like that plan, so we will write the.
I mean, under the conditions of the contract, that's true. So this, and this is relative to those people. There's a couple of people I don't, that may not know on on the meeting.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Gromer.
Good evening. Is with, um. Well, it's kind of a little confusing, but it's it's Paragon Energy, but the contract will be with Mass Power Choice LLC. And this is in consideration of initiating a community choice electricity aggregation program for the town. And I, there was some questions from the board to Mr. Gromer, um, and and, uh, his firm was. The, uh, recommended firm from the Sustainability Committee by the town. I know, I know you all know this, I'm saying this for. But, um. And so, uh, the board had authorized, um, me to to engage negotiations with, uh, Mr. Gromer and his firm to to come up with this contract for the board. Did, I believe, has announced any questions about the, about the potential implementation of this program? Um, and again, it is, it is considered, uh, like, uh, almost automatic. If we were to go to this far, and this is probably maybe a year or so out from getting to this point we're on the verge of, which is. What like an effect that you might see actually on your energy bills for the residents and and, uh. You know, the utility payers in town, um. But still, it's considered an opt out program. So there's a certain amount of like automatic enrollment and then.
That that's if the plan goes forward on the individual resident.
If we get that far.
Right.
Down this, down this, down this path, um, and then the costs are not, not so much to like the town's general fund, um, missed, uh. The firm would be paid basically. Actually, I don't want to get, I know it's a little more complicated and I'm prepared to just talk to you, but but, but it's not going to come out of the general fund. It'll be basically through the program itself, um. You know, there's dividends, so to speak, when it comes to the firm that's consulting this and it's sort of like going through the bidding process and 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 administrate the program.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Gromer, could you introduce yourself and then just, I I know you explained this to us when you were here, um, a a. Number of months ago, but can you just give us a high level overview of and fill in any details, um, from what Greg just covered?
Sure, absolutely. My name is Paul Gromer. I'm with the firm of Mass Power Choice. We're an energy consulting firm. Um, the proposal is to assist the town to develop what's called the Community Choice Aggregation Program. Which is effectively a group electricity purchasing program organized by the town. Um, something that's allowed under Massachusetts state law. It's very popular in Massachusetts. Over a hundred and fifty communities have these programs. Including large communities like Boston and Worcester and Cambridge and smaller communities like. Um, Acton and Lexington and Chelmsford and, as I said, over a hundred and fifty in total. Um, the benefits for the town and the residents are, the programs can, um, provide more stable pricing that you get than the alternatives. Often there's a strong potential for savings. Savings can't be guaranteed, but that has been the experience that. All or nearly all aggregation programs are saving residents money as compared to the alternative. That can't be promised because the comparison, the utility price goes up and down all the time, but it has been the experience that there has been savings. And it's also a way to provide electricity choices for the residents. Um, you were exactly right in the the description so far in that. At this stage, um, what we would do for the town is develop up what's required by the state is something called an aggregation plan, which explains how the program would work. Um, that gets submitted to the state for their review and approval, um, which typically takes now a year or so to go through that process. Um, and then after it's approved, um, the town will go out to bid, you'll get price bids for the program for the, what the cost for electricity would be for the residents. And the town will make the ultimate decision at that point whether to launch the program or not. At any point up until then, you could say we we've thought about this, but it doesn't seem to us to be a good. Program for our residents, so we would choose not to go forward. Um, and there isn't a cost. Um, to the town funds, um, or to anyone unless you go forward. If you do decide. Ultimately to go forward a year or so down the road and launch the program, the way firms like mine are paid as we get a small broker fee. Out of the electricity, but that's, you know, a year or so down the road. Again, after you you've decided at that point that you want to go forward.
Thank you.
It's a very high level review, but I'm sorry, guys.
No, um, a- anything else you wanted to conclude with?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Uh, just for those following along at home, uh, or or online, um, October fourth meeting of the select board has the the. Full presentation, which, um, contains all the information which we just heard summarized. So if you're looking for that, it's on the October fourth meeting. Um, I'll open it up to questions for the select board. David?
No.
Okay. Um, well, very well. Uh, well, in that case, thank you very much for your work, so I'll entertain a motion.
I guess before that, uh, it's a difficult question. So. You know, if we move. To approve the contract and we approve the contract. Any of the questions that we have in the interim? Before we make a commitment, we can still not go forward.
Uh, that's a great question. So there is a termination clause like there's. But it, but it does have to say that there's some sort of like breach for the for the understanding of of what, you know, uh, mass. Power choice is gonna do in the execution of that contract. And, um. So in other words, I I don't wanna like mislead and say that, like, if we don't feel comfortable, we can just stop anytime. There there has to be some regrets. Be justified. So I do recommend their their questions. Um, hey, well, Paul, can you explain, has there been an instance where the town has gotten this far and perhaps already has like, uh? An agreement with with your firm? And then decides, you know, it's not right for that.
Um, we have not had that experience so far. So. In all of the communities that we've worked with and we work with about thirty or so, thirty-five or so communities. Ultimately, the town has all been able to get a plan approved by the state and has ultimately decided to go forward with it. Um, but you are free at any time not to go forward. And there are two. Two distinct issues here, I think, that in this discussion. One is. Whether you need to launch the program or not, and that's you can decide to do it or not do it all the way up until a year from now, you know, or more. Once you get price bid, you always have that freedom not to go forward. In terms of our contract with the town, if you decide you don't like us and you wanna work with another firm like us. You would need a reason for that. We would have had to have breached the contract to for you to switch from us to somebody else. So. There's a limitation on that. There needs to be a good reason, but in terms of. Not launching the program, you can decide not to launch it for any reason. That's always entirely up to you and and within your discretion.
However, yes, our chair, I'm sorry. However, if we decide not to go through the program, would we owe your firm money? Because you're you're. Oh, okay.
And and I, you know, it just so, so, um. You know, so Paul, where I I'm not questioning his company or anything. I'm just questioning some of the things that we discussed earlier about, um. Our concerns about the plan and that, um. You know, how it's implemented. In in this community in particular, one of my concerns is communication. How do we make sure everybody got the notification and what they have to do because. You know, we we seem to struggle with. Communication to everybody and that's, and that's a concern. Uh, because if if even one or two families don't wanna take part in this in there. They don't know how to opt out or they didn't know they could opt out or they didn't know what was coming, then we we failed. So those are my concerns, like. Just that type of stuff, you know, how how we how we deal with. The the residents of town and get this information to them. That's my only thing that would ever prohibit me from. Trying to save everybody, including the towns a month.
That's fair. My my definition would be to charge the state. Looked at them. Sorry, Jesse.
Sorry.
This, Mr. Gromer, can you, can you, I believe your purring does provide some. Assistance with that communication or am I mistaken on that?
No, you're you're exactly correct. So, and the public communication is one of the most important parts of the plan. Both for the community and it's also something that the state requires and they take a hard look at. As part of the proposal, the. The plan we would develop in terms of how the program would work. Part of that would be a detailed education and communication plan for the residents. Where we would outline all the steps that would be taken for them. Typically, that includes, um, two mailings that go to each of the residents, one kind of a. A preliminary mailing, a heads up here, this is coming. And then every eligible customer for the program would get a letter. Um, approved both by the town and by the state, explaining the program, explaining that they can choose not to participate if they'd like. Explaining how they would exercise that choice not to participate and giving them thirty days to make a decision. So. That letter goes for sure, um, to everybody, um, as in, as I said, a preliminary mailing before that is a heads up, this more detailed mailing is coming. And then in addition to that, we would do other educational steps that we would work out with you, but that typically includes, um. A couple of public meetings where we would present the plan and answer any resident questions about it. Um, and then we would do, there'll be a program website which we would develop for you and then other forms of. Um, communication. So if there are town newsletters, we would be in that. Um, we can do help with social media, um, that sort of thing, newspaper announcements. And we would. Work with you to learn what's the most effective mechanism, what are the most effective ways to in Maynard, and we would. Help you to implement those and those those would be on at our cost as part of the service that we provide.
Uh, quick question, and I hope it's quick. Um. My concern is, first off, I support the program. I support the aggregation. Effort and. I was involved in it long ago, but, um, one question I would have is. If we move forward. And I guess this is more directed towards Greg than anybody else. What type of, uh, town staff requirements are going to be involved in the process as we move forward to the next step, the next step, the next step? Uh, the reason I asked that is, uh. We are not guaranteed here right now that we will have the commitment board at the end of the day, at least that's. My recollection of the last time there was some concern and if we had voted, it probably would have failed that day. Um, so my question would be, and there's no new information, so I would assume that things remain the same. So if we put your time and your staff and everything else into it and we. Get nothing from it at the end. Um. You know, how much time is expected of your staff?
Um, that's a great question. I appreciate you asking. So my expectation is, at a minimum, I'll be. Food breeding, uh, so to speak, uh, what that materials that, um. The firm is beside, provide to us and then. You know, but as my saying is, I think this is what Mr. Gromer just said is that, like, there there will be notifications sent out that his firm will administer. So if you like, they'll send us the messaging, which I suspect is. Probably pretty standard format and then, um, and then we can help in whatever way, but. Verbally, and I think a lot of my expectation is like, his firm will tell us the message. And then if they go to our website, we give a lot of, and then we can sort of encourage what we can do, but otherwise, at least. I'm not, I don't actually expect it to be that great of an impact to myself. Yeah, I I really do appreciate that question. Um. But it's not out of the normal sort of like our regular duties to like support this.
Any other questions? Okay, uh. Now I'll entertain one.
I'll move to authorize town administrator to approve the contract with. Mass Power Choice LLC consulting services related to. Community Choice Electricity Aggregation for a term to end November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
All in favor? Very good. Mr. Gromer, thank you. Looking forward to continue working with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Uh, contract nine B, our old friends, Sidco, Coolidge School. Uh.
Yeah, so we don't know. So I'd recommend we.
Okay.
It's not to say I don't want, it's, uh, because I have no, no, no closing agreement to provide you.
Yep.
Uh, Sidco is yet here back from the Secretary of State's. And specifically in this.
How good, how long is our current extension for them?
I think it's the twenty-third.
This month?
Yes, so I already, I already dealt to, uh, town council to say, I don't get it by then. I think it's probably. So I'll come back to the board next.
Okay, nine C, uh, this is a change order for the construction of well four A. Which is one of our water treatment plant upgrades. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you please introduce yourself?
That's the mark.
All right. Um, yeah, could you give us an overview very briefly for A and then what the specific change order is? This is a a rather large number, so.
Yeah, so the reason the change order is in front of you, it is a, it is a large request. Um, the larger request is based off of hazardous material removal and the cost to perform that. Um, this is under the, uh, change order of phase one of well fours at four A's construction. Which has to do with most of the geotechnical work, meaning the underground drilling, um, the excavation work and the processes to, um. Install backwater tanks outside of, so a majority of this contract falls outside of the treatment. Um, you'll see that the second contract that's on your agenda is phase two, which is mainly the treatment plan aspect. Um, the change order falls under phase one as the hazardous material removal is. Pretty much based off the site.
Any questions?
Yes, um. Has this been budgeted for?
Yes.
It's included in our, uh, previous.
Correct. Yeah, and it's all been budgeted. It all falls within our bonding and our rates. So there will be no impact to our rates for this.
And I guess the other side comment I would make relative to that issue, that this was an unexpected expenditure significant at that. Because of site issues, sounds very, very similar to what we were just talking about relative to the Green Meadow location.
I I noticed that was.
Correct. Myself and Chris talk, um, regularly on some aspects like this. And yeah, that's actually one of those situations where, like, any. Rising and falling commodity right now, it's predictable by the day. Meaning the landfill dictates the end of costs.
All right, any other questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the change order. E C. O zero zero one, Associated Construction Company. For the well for a water treatment plant upgrades, phase one construction in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Five hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second.
All in favor? Very well. And, uh, item nine D, which is the contract for phase two.
That's correct. Yeah, so we were, uh, lucky as the board remembers that we originally, this project was one total project. And we had to phase it and re-sculpt it based off the bid results in the changing market that just happened to kind of fall on that situation where the market was going crazy. So we re-sculpted to a phase one, phase two, which we previously talked about. We did budget for contingency and redundancy as the market started to fluctuate and that's actually, we have the ability to handle that change order that you just saw. So, um, for phase two, we were, um, actually, uh, very lucky and advantageous on our bid awards. Um, they came under us. Um, so we have contingencies in place, but even though it comes underestimated and the contracts in front of you does not necessarily mean there won't be a significant. Change order as this is a combination scope. Um, in the future. So there is a situation where we budgeted for that as well, Dave. So we we've set our rates and. Will consistently have a situation that we've accounted for all of this when it comes to the financial aspect. But what's in front of you is the base, uh, the base contract of phase two. And, um, the process is to conduct the treatment plant upgrades to mesh and coincide with phase one.
Any questions?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the contract with Liston Builders Corporation for the well for a water treatment plant upgrade space two construction contract thirteen seventy-six in the amount of. Four million, one hundred, eight hundred and four million, one hundred thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine.
Second.
All in favor? All right, very good. Another important step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh. Item E is, uh, the Maynard Dog Park contract, which I believe we covered briefly at the last meeting, but do you wanna give us a quick update on?
Oh, yeah.
What we're looking at here?
This is, this is our good part. I don't, well, we have.
Yeah, I think Kelly is.
Hi, good afternoon, guys.
Good evening.
So we've, we've had a great partnership made up for. Although not, and, uh. And this just sort of continues that path, uh, so you can see in your, in your materials, uh, they provided updated renewal. Um, we did see, um, advice from our our liability insurance provider, whether, whether we could, you know, basically. Not not have May dogs start to, or continue to pay for their own insurance, but our advisor, I guess, that's doing better, but I said, no. Um. Uh. And then, oh, and then there was updated park rules, um. So I I think I I recommend of course the approval of this agreement and, um, for the further success of May dogs and. For another three years.
Mr. Kelly, would you like to say anything?
Uh, no, just to reiterate what Greg says, a great relationship with the town, um, and we. Like what we're doing and hope to continue doing what we do with you guys.
You're good. Well, yeah, and thank you for the management of of that, um, area. I it's. Well-used even in the winter months and, uh, I think a lot of residents appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I I expect great winter usage after, uh. Uh, Justin's, uh, working at for the drainage and from a pretty sizable anonymous gift we got to help. Clean up the park and do some regrading work. So that's, uh, that shows that the community as a large really also enjoys. The 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 area as well.
Good to hear. Any questions?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the renewal of the license to enter and use town-owned land for the purpose of a dog park by the Maynard Dog Owners Group. Incorporated, May Dog. For a term of January first, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
All in favor? Very good. May Dog is a good name. Thank you again.
Uh, thank you very much, guys. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Uh, moving on to item ten, this is, uh, an item we looked at at our last meeting. This is, um. We are gonna be authorizing, if we accept this motion, uh, the town administrator to negotiate a host community agreement with. Cloud Canopy. They presented their proposals and we discussed that at our last meeting, um. Uh, Gregor Megan, would you like to? Add anything?
It's a manufacturing license that they're seeking. Um, and we have Scott Smith and Paul.
Hey. Good evening, Mr. Smith. How are you?
Good evening. How's everyone?
I think we're, we're doing well. Health a little tired. Um. Do we have any? We we've seen the presentation. Do we have any questions now having sat with it for a few weeks, um, on this?
I don't.
Okay.
I know.
All right.
I took a look at the site and drove around back, saw where it will be and, uh. All makes sense to me.
Excellent.
Very good. Well, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to authorize the town administrator to negotiate a host community agreement with Cloud Canopy for a marijuana manufacturing license.
Second.
All in favor? Very good. All right. Well, thank you for sitting around for so long. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And as a.
Thank you very much. And as a resident of the town, I appreciate all the hard work and effort you're putting into these other topics because they seem very important and you're definitely checking all the boxes. So thank you very much.
Good, good luck with your, with your business.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good. Alright, moving on to item eleven, we will be setting the time for the annual um, annual town election, uh, which as we have it here is proposed for Tuesday, May second, twenty twenty three. Any, anything to add on top of that?
I know, I got this recommended. I recommend this.
I will move to set the date, time and place for the annual town elections, Tuesday, May second, twenty twenty three, seven AM to eight PM in the Fowler School Auditorium, three Tiger Drive, May.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Alright, very good. And number twelve, we got the uh, time for the annual town meeting, which is uh, as dictated by charter uh, Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Anything to add on this one, Greg?
I'm going to set the date, time and location of the twenty twenty three annual town meeting as Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty three, beginning at seven o'clock PM at the Fowler School on the twenty three Tiger Drive, May.
Second.
All in favor? Very good. Uh, there will not be a motion tonight associated with uh, number thirteen. However, I do want to announce that uh, at our next meeting, we are planning to discuss uh, the formation of a working group and the charge for that working group to consider the options of what to do with the property at sixty one, sixty three Summer Street, uh, currently known as Art Space Maynard, uh, and the, the charge of that committee will be to uh, provide multiple recommendations back to this board who will make that final decision. And so we will have a, a fuller discussion at our next meeting, uh, in terms of how that will be structured and, and how those options will be looked at. Uh, does anybody from this board want to add anything to that comment? Okay, very good. Uh, moving on to correspondences, um, I do want to pull one item uh, out of order, which is J in terms of DPW drinking water notice, because I know that's been a a topic of concern for our residents. And so can we have a brief synopsis of the testing and then the notification process?
Yeah, so lead and copper is tested. We have um, tested it since the uh, act has been implemented in public drinking water. Um, this statistic has been provided on our consumer uh, confidence reports yearly, uh, as it's a requirement mass general law under one. Um, this annual test resulted in a um, a threshold violation of the action, which to kind of give a brief overview, um, the town is required to test thirty locations that are identified by mass D P. Those, uh, those um, dwellings are identified based on a number of criterias. Most of the criteria is of the year it's built, the age and complexity, because lead was used prior than nineteen eighty six for lead solder. You have lead faucet piping, things of that nature. So it's an internal aspect. Um, those thirty have been the same thirty that we've had for several, several years. Um, and what ends up happening is when we don't have enough samples taken, because it is a voluntary process, we can't force our companies to take those to take those tests and those sample tests. What ends up happening is if we don't get enough within that thirty, we have to move to our next block, which is another ten and it's a ten within thirty, so a sixty block. Um, and that violation that then moves to multiple other locations that are also identified by mass D P, again, same criterias. And if we, if there's violations, the violation is per dwelling at that location and that threshold goes into the statistical analysis of all of them combined, which is that ninety percent that you see on the pamphlet. Uh, if there's a ninetieth percentile violation, it is required that an informational package be put out in the resident, in the customer's mailbox immediately. And that is the tri-fold information package that you see.
Just real quick, who does that go out to?
Every single customer on, that we serve underwater. Yeah, so if we have sewer customers, we do have some outside customers still, so they receive these as well. So every single dwelling is actually roughly about forty three hundred customers that receive this.
Will it go to the um, property owner?
It is property.
Payer versus, for example, if the landlord, so some people may not have received it because it went to the landlord.
Yes, so by law, we have to send it to the person that pays the bill, meaning the owner of the property. Uh, so all of the customers receive this notification. Um, their due diligence should be going down to their tenants, but we can't necessarily force that. Um. We only have customer information, so that, like, if there's a dwelling that has eight apartment units, it only goes to that owner. But if that dwelling has eight condo units, it could go to all the condos, depending on how their meter system is set up. There is actually a, I'm, when I first started about four years ago and Chris was dealing with this a little bit back then, is we have a little bit of an issue in town with condoization and actually how sub-metering works versus non-sub-metering.
Let's continue and get back to that.
But that's how some large facilities may have received it in all their mailboxes versus some who may not receive it. Uh, so when a publication goes out, it is to inform and educate, because there's a lot of situations that town's utility actually has no authority over, meaning we can't force somebody to change their plumbing. The tri-fold informational package is an educational piece to make residents and customers aware that they may have lead in their services. And if they're, if so, they need to test immediately if they think it's an issue. We have customers that know that when they do their thirty, that they're over, they don't care. So some people are sensitive to it, some people are not, just like when you, if you read our consumer confidence report, we may have higher levels of potassium versus other communities, but we're all under the threshold. So we have, we have to meet our water quality requirements and we typically do across the board. This is a violation of the lead situation, the lead and copper rule, which isn't necessarily the utility's responsibility. It is the utility's responsibility to educate our consumers that there could be lead within their piping system. That being said, our internal processes, we check for lead in our raw water and our finished water. We do not have lead in the water that we withdraw from the ground and produce and distribute into our piping systems. We also do not have lead pipes in our distribution network. This is internal services or internal quality. When they say internal services, our rules and regulations are property bands and a service line is the responsibility of the customer. They could have a lead service. They could have lead solder in their pipes, or they could have lead faucets. That's why the the audit process that the E puts out for lead and copper is identified by the most likely to fail, so that they can educate those consumers that they actually remedy your situation. What the utility does to help mitigate that issue, meaning lead leaching, is we do a corrosion control program. That corrosion control program is based off of a pH factor and a chemical uh, process that is done. It is monitored twenty-four seven through our SCADA system, and it is also monitored daily, a secondary uh, check through our manual pH readings through our operators. So our SCADA system reads it, which is a computer automated system twenty-four seven, and then we also double check to make sure that accuracy is there, meaning. Um, our corrosion control program is monitored yearly and it is approved by D P. So um, a lot of what you're seeing is the result of the original thirty not fulfilling their non-obligation, but their duty in providing their sources. So when you see on the flyer that there was a gap from nineteen ninety eight to now, is because those thirty have actually always done their due diligence. We are seeing, and I'm not sure how much you guys see this, but the DPW sees this quite often, we're seeing a huge changeover in the town. We are doing anywhere between ten and fifteen reads a day, a final reads a day, which means that we're having people move in, uh, move out and move in. So some people may not want to do that process. Some people may not know the severity of participating in that process. We even provide uh, rebates, bills to kind of enhance them to make sure that.
Okay, but, okay, questions from the board?
No, no, not a question, but a comment. Um, I think the explanation that we got here is wonderful. Um, I do think we can learn from some of these like events that uh, relative to how we go about communication. Uh, I think there was, I think there was a miss in that as water commissioners and people get uh, uh, what some people felt was an alarming announcement um, that they called us as water commissioners, but more so as their neighbors and select people. And we don't know anything about it. So I think there was an op, there's an opportunity for us to recognize something like this, at least a brief email saying, hey, here's what's happening, here's why. I also understand after having questioned about that, that the timing of the release of the pamphlet was a little bit different than we had expected. Okay, that's, uh, that's understandable. But I do think we need, if there is an urgent issue like that, unusual, out of, out of, out of the blue um, that we be informed as the water commissioners.
Yeah, so sometimes sadly with that one in particular, it's a reactionary approach. So the correspondence part that you're referring to would have been on Monday when I did send the correspondence, but yes, I didn't find out the flyers went out Friday.
Yeah.
And so, but. We, while the flyers are being prepared, we should have been notified as soon as, as soon as we knew.
The flyers were prepared Tuesday. We, we, we just, Justin and I discussed this, but I understand what the, I understand that.
Yeah, it's, it's an opportunity for us to.
So when did we find out at the town that there was a positive test that would trigger this process?
So it was actually a month process that the E P and the utility goes back and forth about, because the ninetieth percentile is, is a situation where we have to wait for lab results from a number of these individuals. So it doesn't always come in, in a bulk and go all in the bulk. So the flyers had to go out that Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving, and they were going to go out and be on Mondays.
But we distribute the flyers.
Well, we use a third party to distribute, and it was set for Monday.
Okay, but I don't understand why we couldn't have known when, while we were preparing the flyers and working with that third-party education material, we knew we were going to be sending these out. So I don't understand why we couldn't know in advance.
So I wouldn't have given you an email correspondence, because that's not the normal procedure. I put it on as correspondence, it would have discussed that on the agenda, but if you wanted as an email correspondence in the future.
I think public health concern, the significance of lead in drinking water, potential lead, I think is, is something I want to know about.
So the difference is it's not a public health concern.
Yeah, I, I just, I just think.
Not from the utility.
My concern would be the fact that there was a announcement going out that is a little unusual. We've never had that happen before, right? You know, in twenty years that we just be given a heads up, hey, this is going out, here's what it means. If anybody calls you, tell them that there's nothing to worry about, because this is due to individual homes with their piping themselves, not anything, because the general reaction was, I just cooked my turkey for Thanksgiving and I gave, gave all my family members lead. Um.
Part of that narrative is we actually don't want to create a false narrative outside the educational aspect. So I'm getting in front of the, we actually want the flyer to hit everybody before the conversations. Meaning if we put out a narrative on Facebook and it's changed prior to the education.
I don't want to have asked for a Facebook post, but rather just notifying us, hey, a poster is going out, you know?
I, I feel both, because right now you get a flyer on lead, it's very confusing to look at that. Why am I all of a sudden getting a flyer on lead and warning about lead, right? The true piece of information we want out is that what you said in the middle of, of what you said there, that there's not lead in the town water supply or in our distribution pipes. If there is lead, it is in, in individual buildings. So right, that, that piece of information, I know what you're about to tell me, there's state regulations, and yet still, we need to find a way to say that quickly so that people, because that's the key piece of information we want. So are you really telling me that the state process for this prohibits us from just cleanly stating that as a town and putting out a statement there?
So that template model is the state's template model. All we do is put in our action threshold limits and then the difference of our statistics. We cannot change any of the wording on that flyer. Do I think some of the wording on that flyer is a little scary?
Less about the flyer, but how we present that and package that flyer and put information next to it.
It has to be approved by D P. And it's there.
Get it approved by D P, because that's the message people want to hear. They want to know that there's not lead in the town.
And I'm not, I'm not necessarily concerned about the language being on the flyer, because I understand the state has its requirements, but rather my, my issue is that we as board members and as water commissioners be advised, hey, this has happened. And if you get a call, here's, here's the issue.
I have.
And, and, and then the wider news can be distributed out as we, because now at least we have some clue.
Uh, yeah, I have two issues. One is exactly that, but the second is right now, if you're a concerned member of the town or resident of the town, you got this flyer. And I think as of today, you can see there's a town Facebook post about it. I'm, I think it like links even to the town administrator's post, then it goes to the DPW water and sewer page, then you gotta scroll down a third of the way to the page, then you gotta click on the brochure, and then you read this vague brochure. And maybe if you back out and read the fine text, you can see, okay, here, two thirds of the way down this paragraph, we are below our lead limits for the last, you know, several decades or whatever the amount of time is. So wha, what is preventing us from putting out a message that simply says the town water supply lead testing limits are below the, the permissible thresholds and we are compliant as we have been since nineteen ninety eight or whatever the case may be.
The entire narrative is exactly set in stone by D P, minus our action threshold limits and that. And actually, the hyperlink process has to go in that manner for D P. I don't always agree with D P. You're the first, they hear you say it all the time.
There's no process by which we can get additional text approved by D P?
No, they have a specific rule on how educational flyers go up.
But right now, you have that flyer posted on your, on the DPW water and sewer website, and below that, you've got some contextual text.
Yes.
So you've, you've provided a message in addition to that, and, and we've got that from the town administrator account, blah, blah, blah. I think even linking that is putting out some contextual, so why can't we just?
It all links that to the flyer.
Okay.
And that the small, like little executive summary is just a revitalization of what that means, educational piece. So if I, so you're potentially saying, could we make a statement that there's no lead in the water?
Yeah, why can't we do that completely independently of anything?
Technically, technically, there's legality aspects to even saying that situation. The water that's even inside the pipes inside your home is public drinking water. Even if it's your pipes that have lead, that's technically public drinking water. So it is a vague, finite situation that the lead act really didn't solve. So technically, me stating that your public drinking water doesn't have lead is not an accurate statement.
The way you stated it in the middle of this conversation.
Our raw water.
Yep.
Are treated source and put into the distribution system.
Yes, it's not a lead. And why can't we say that cleanly so our residents don't have this concern and have to go through this multi-click process and read through this brochure and then backtrack to find out that they don't have lead in the water that is at least entering into their houses?
We also don't want to create a false narrative that they need to ignore the flyer. So if they believe there's no lead and we just threw a flyer out there, we actually want each resident to read this flyer and take preventative measures for themselves, because we don't actually have every single dwelling's identification of lead. We only do thirty. So we have forty, three hundred people out there. We don't actually test everybody's homes. This is an educational flyer to really wake people up to the idea of maybe I should start to have my water tested, because I may have issues. And it is technically public drinking water until it comes out of the faucet and goes in the sewer. So technically, it is public drinking water. Our source water does not have lead. But it does not mean that somebody's Jeff may not, I just, the may, Chris may not, and that is technically public drinking water.
I get that, but we have failed to communicate that clearly to the residents of this town. I understand that you're following the procedures of this flyer, but the way it's presented, it's, it's very difficult for anybody to understand without a lot of time and effort and there has to be a better way to communicate that sort of thing in these situations. I, and am I going to be in trouble right now for saying here in this, like, board meeting that the town water supply is pushed out of the ground, as you just said, doesn't have lead in it? I'm not putting it in the correct context of the brochure. I haven't heard my statement with the D P. So why, what, what is, why?
So as long as it comes after the flyer going out, that is the conversation. So the flyer always puts us up, pushes all of our customers back to if there's questions to contact the E P or your utility, and those are the contact questions that can be arranged. But if we put out a, a narrative, even on a piggyback, where someone may actually have been on vacation, they come home and actually open their mail yet, we don't want our customers not to open their mail and take it upon themselves to read it.
What if they haven't opened their mail by now and I'm talking about it here, they're worried about it. What's the, what's the statute of limitation for which we can put out an independent message that says we don't have lead in the town component of the water supply?
That's a subjective view at that point.
Okay. Alright, and.
I know, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I also. I know, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I also know D P as well. Um, and so I, I understand this.
It's frustrating. We cannot talk to our residents and explain the situation clearly that we have to go through this process. So um, no comment for, for me. Anybody else? Okay, uh, we'll move back. Thank you, Justin. I appreciate your detailed explanation.
Yeah.
Uh, going back to the rest of the correspondences A through I, any comments?
I, I do want to comment that um I you know, I'm, I'm sad that Caroline Mahidi decided to resign. Um, I had heard, and honestly, I, I didn't know her that well, but I heard um great things um from the committee. Uh, so, so hopefully we can find another member that um that'll be able to help out.
I, I concur. Uh, hopefully that the advisor charge we gave them earlier will help them out.
Yep.
Do exactly that. Any other comments on the correspondence? Alright.
Move to accept and approve correspondences A through J as shown.
Okay. All in favor? Very good. One set of minutes?
Most approved, uh, accepted and approved. Meeting minutes, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, as shown.
Second.
Any comments? Alright, all in favor? Town administrator report.
Okay, brief, Mr. Chair. Uh, we have a new partnership. Uh, we then will be scheduling um at some point, probably January, or so, uh, an open house for the. Um, closing, uh, we're going to be booking town offices on seven fifteen, which is the Friday, or it's um we'll be doing, um, and be booking the twenty-third, which is Friday before. Alright, so Friday before Christmas, and then uh on the twenty-sixth, and, and the twenty-sixth, that's specifically an observance of the state holiday. And then uh again on January second, and in the service of the state holiday for New Year's. And I look forward to the menorah lighting on the twenty-first. And um, as always, I encourage the public to look at the town manager's report, because the department's put a lot of work into it. And there's a lot of, lot, lot good to read about the Council on Aging Library, and I'm proud of the um the library and trustees, the library for getting over four hundred and fifty respondents to their survey, which is great, uh, which is really informative for their strategic plan. And I think that's it. So uh.